Okay, it's five thirty, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission to order. And first item of business is the roll call. Commissioner Bradbury here, Commissioner Brown here, Commissioner Jordan, we have not heard from yet. Commissioner Snodgrass is excused. Okay, there's Commissioner Jordan. Hi. So Commissioner Jordan is joining us virtually. Commissioner Snodgrass is excused and Commissioner Salt is joining us. Lee and Commissioner Burkhardt?
Here.
Okay. Very good. So that's the role. Approval of minutes. The motion would be in order.
So I moved in minutes be approved as written second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye. Motion carries. Michelle, do we have anyone in the waiting room?
We have one, but I do not believe she's here to talk.
Okay. All right, well, if you want to comment, then I will skip over the public comment, the quorum statement. And we'll move right to the comprehensive plan. Update, the harbor element.
Harbor element.
Right.
To share my whole screen and. Yeah. Sorry. Um, so, so this is a little bit of a test case. As we go through the elements, it is, the, the goal is of course to both familiarize everybody with the substance of the elements. But more importantly, I think, well, as importantly, I'd like to generate discussion, of course, and, and input that your commission has. But I'm also looking for ideas or questions that we can use in our public outreach. Because it, it's always kind of challenging as, as planners. We're used to sort of, you know, well, you know, this is, this is what good planning is, or this is how things should be. And in this case, you know, for, for, for comprehensive planning and most long range planning endeavors, we, we want to hear from the public, and we've talked about that a lot. And so the ideas, the vision for what the comprehensive plan is and will be is the community's vision. Think I hit the right button? So. Again, it, it, so I've actually, everybody received the harbor element, that's chapter three in our comprehensive plan. And I thought it was an interesting place to start because it's not, it's not a required element under GMA. It's optional, but it reflects a lot of the, the policy issues that exist in many other places. And to me, what's most kind of the, the nut of, of a lot of what we do are the trade offs. Right? So trade offs between competing policy interests. There will, and we'll go through the, the, each of the, the goals and, and the underlying policies. It's a lot of verbiage, not as much as we'll be getting into later. But again, it kind of is, it's an interesting place to start from my perspective. Again, trade offs being, you know, in, in the case of, of the harbor. It is basically development, growth versus protection of existing historic cultural resources and the character of the downtown, which in the harbor broadly, which we know is incredibly important and part of, of Gig Harbor's identity. So, so here you can see, and it's not, not super easy to, to read all of it, but the blue line reflects the actual boundary of the harbor. And this was defined, the area was defined, and this was adopted in December of 2012 in conjunction with a survey of historic resources. So historic character plays a huge, huge role in, in the harbor. And so as we go through each of the slides, I have this little annoying piece that we'll continue to ask whether any questions arise. And yeah, please start us up.
Go ahead.
Oh, that reference to the historic resources, is that a document? Or where is that listed or is that what we couldn't get?
This, I, I was not able to find it readily, but I, I haven't spent a ton of time. It, yes, because it was adopted, that would be, that would exist.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, and we do have, we certainly have an inventory, what I'm not sure of, and I don't know if Carl knows the answer to this, if it's the same as our inventory of, of historic.
Register.
Right, so they're different.
Yeah, they, they contracted, the city contracted a, a historic resources survey of the area, and they were looking at even residential housing at that time. So that was, it was a, a large survey done just to kind of figure out what we had for resident for, for historical structures in general in the city. And then from that, we started designating some of the, you know, the net shifts and the parks as on our actual local historic register. Those others could be used for that, but, or, you know, could, could apply and be eligible to get on the store, the local store register. But of course, we haven't seen any private applications come in for that.
I, I am curious, what is a simple definition of a historic structure?
It depends. It depends on the jurisdiction that's defining. There's a, the state, there's a national register, of course, the state Department of.
Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation is who we would defer to.
I imagine a lot of things get proposed to be put on that register and then.
Well, we don't get a ton, you know, actually, and it's all, like I said, it's all been city owned properties, structures and, and the Shenandoah behind the, behind the history museum. It's actually on our local register as well.
And is that a list that we, is just a list of properties and then does it spell out the significance of, I mean, is.
Where's the resident? They're, they're each adopted by resolution and it is on the, on the website.
It is.
Yeah, all right.
I didn't do it.
The survey, that survey itself, I don't think is on the website, although we have access.
Yeah, I'll pull it up and I can, I can share that.
Share. That was, it was, it was done through a grant that we got from the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. Because we're on, we're a, we are a CLG certified local government under DAP. We have access to those grants.
Carl, would this also approximate the boundaries of the city maybe fifty, seventy-five years ago? The blue lines.
The blue line? That's interesting, but.
Oh, I see what you're saying, when it, when it was first at a town, the town of Gig Harbor, probably pretty close, actually. I don't know about the line through the middle of the harbor, and now the middle of the har, that line actually is not correct, right? It's been to actually encompass the East Harbor as well. So this is just taken from the plan, I'm sure, right? So it's not, it hasn't been updated, we'll of course update that with this.
Which is right. One of the questions that, you know, again, yeah, how, so there's, there's our, our role in making sure that all the elements, whether required under GMA or not, are consistent, you know, with the law, with our own ordinances. So the consistency piece is something that we sort of take on. But then there are other questions about, you know, how this was developed and, and that would come out, you know, as, as part of this survey perhaps in any public outreach that, that was involved in this 2012 effort. What role did the public play in defining what they consider to be, you know, historic, perhaps some sort of historic value? It's just an open question. And I will throw some of those out periodically.
Yeah, the public may be interested in moving that line.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, because there's been a fair amount of development, I know, towards Rosedale and.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah, no, and that's exactly the kind of question that I think we want to sort of be prepared to put out there as we engage in all sorts of public outreach. Does this reflect, there's, you know, again, sort of the technical aspect, but then other things that are maybe not historic structures per se, but have other sort of relevance, cultural or otherwise. And again, this is, this came about as a survey of historic resources, but it is the harbor. It isn't the historic harbor, it's the harbor. So the historic component is a part of how the harbor is perceived and defined.
Okay, I, I was asking, because I'm on the design review board too, and then we take the historic designation itself, but at least reality of those structures, particularly in Millville. And I think sometimes too seriously, where, where we have structures that are just, in, in my opinion, not worth preserving, but, but we have to require in any way.
Well, that's how the design manuals currently set us in the city, so we're, you know, in that historic district, those certain provisions apply.
Exactly.
So if that is something that we wanted to change, you know, down with this update, you know, that's certainly something that.
Exactly, right, we're not just looking at the comprehensive plan, just being a project as it is, but we also have to look at our development regulations. And so if there are changes about what the community thinks warrants protection of whatever sort, we want to make sure that that's consistent with our design manual. And there are references in, in the element to, to design. Again, it's really, it's about consistency with, with what, what the community decides. It has a certain type of value. So why was that element adopted? As I discussed earlier, it really was community concern about the trade offs, growth, economic development versus preserving historical, the historical context of the harbor, and also preserving the environment. But it was really the concern about what growth was doing to, to the harbor and downtown areas. And I'm always going to have this little annoying outreach question kind of thing, and I could not get rid of that weird line. Reflecting once again, lack of robust graphic abilities. So the vision for the harbor, and again, I don't know how many commissioners were able to actually go through and, and, and read it. So, and I hate reading things to folks, but I will anyways. Fireplace where residents, visitors and voters enjoy walkable waterfront, walkable peace will come into play. Obviously, the views, natural environments, a place that celebrates and perpetuates the character and traditions of a working waterfront and preserves historic neighborhoods, place that supports and values local retail shops and services. Interesting to me that they call out retail, I don't know why that popped out to me. A place that provides services for recreation and commercial boating. Again, anything in the, the vision statement that generates questions, what is included, what isn't? Sort of high level overview, pretty general, but anything that, that pops up, please, as we go along, feel free to share.
I have a comment supporting local retail shops. And it is kind of important to the character of the community. It, it's why the community has resisted, for example, big box stores. And particularly downtown and waterfront area, where we do have a lot of small locally owned shops. I, I think people want to preserve that kind of character.
Absolutely. I guess I was just surprised that I don't think of, of restaurant as a retail shop. And so it was, I don't know, I kind of went huh, well, what about, what about restaurants? Which we have many, just my own, my own thing, I will.
Ron, can we include restaurants in there?
Of course.
I think that's an important component.
It, it's certainly, you know, in terms of nightlife. And, yeah. I, I think a lot of folks that, that go downtown now, after, after hours after five o'clock, there's, there's not a ton of, of retail opportunity, but there certainly are some really great restaurants.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the intent is for restaurants to capture my services.
Okay, all right.
I would, I would kind of encourage us to maybe look at more of a definition of livable. I mean, right, we've lost a lot of services in downtown Gig Harbor. And if you live downtown Gig Harbor and you didn't have a car, you can't even get, it's a long walk to a grocery store. So incorporating maybe more of that aspect of it, a whole livable part of the community that's accessible, I guess.
Michelle.
It's okay.
Ron, sorry.
I go by whatever.
As an outreach question, do we want to ask the community if they want to have the harbor be a place that encourages visitors?
That's a great question.
Chamber of Commerce would say.
Not everybody necessarily would say that. Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great question.
It is.
Yeah.
Did you repeat that question? I'm sure.
The question, Jason, would be, do we want to add as an outreach question? In, do we want to, do we want to have the harbor be a place that encourages visitors?
Yeah, no, that's, that, there's a lot sort of embedded in that question.
Yeah, that is a heavy duty question.
It really is, but that's exactly the kind of, of, of fundamental policy issue that we want to, we want clear answers from, if we can get them. And maybe it's split, whatever, we'll, we'll figure it out. But, but we can't be afraid to put out the, the tough questions, because again, this is about trade offs. Excellent, thank you. So it's just the list of goals, and as you probably all know, each of the elements starts with the goal and then articulates the policies that, that implement that goal. And so this is all of the goals that are associated with the harbor, and we'll go through each one of these. And as, as quickly or as slowly as the, the commission would like. So, sorry, and then of course, there's a question whether we've captured all of the goals. It's a bigger question, but we have a lot of goals. So, so the first one is circulation. And this is, kind of goes to the livability accessibility question that Commissioner raised. Opportunity to walk, bike and use public transportation. To move the residents, visitors and voters in a safe and orderly fashion in the harbor. So the policies to help implement that, facilitate pedestrian access by linking public park systems for inviting pedestrian experience. And support plan for public transportation opportunities. And work in collaboration with public transit to establish around town transit service throughout the year, allowing residents, visitors and voters accessibility to and from the harbor. Anything that jumps out? About that, that, that would generate questions for folks?
Something that jumps out, and I think it's a really desirable goal, where you've got a train there.
It is, it is, and, and this obviously also ties into our transportation element and the multimodal aspects of creating safe pedestrian bike, all forms of transportation, the around town transit service, I don't know that much about the history of, or where we've been with the trolley, but I know that jumps into mind, right?
Is whether or not we're kind of in a discussion with Pierce Transit about the trolley right now. They're having some trouble with getting it ADA accessible. We're having some trouble with finding drivers to drive. So it already was cut back during COVID a little bit. When it was back in place last year, it was down quite a few trips, I believe. Now we were talking with Pierce Transit about whether or not they're actually going to be able to.
Provide that, provide that, sorry.
Possible having to retrofit that old bus.
That's what they're trying.
To wheelchair and whatnot.
That's what they're trying to do, yeah.
Is that service subsidized by, by the city?
Believe that it is, I don't know what that looks like, but I believe that it is.
Commissioner Jordan has his hand.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I really like the goal. I guess my question is, around public transportation, so I live near a bus line. I've even, you know, my kids have rode the, the trolley. It's, our community doesn't really use public transportation. And that, that's my observation anyway, or very few people use it. And I'm just curious, if this is going to be our goal, which I like the goal, what are we going to do that? I mean, I don't want a goal that's really, that, that there's, it's just talk. So like, what would we do to incentivize people to use public transportation? Otherwise, let's just face reality and, you know, maybe there's just other things we could do, like better sidewalks, because there are people that walk.
Right.
Maybe that's the average question. What level would you prefer a central bus hub for more long distance?
What would you use? Yeah, what would you put your kids on, say, yeah?
This ultimately is a priority question. Obviously, public transportation is going to cost some amount of money. And, and we would have to then make a decision, while however desirable the goal might be, would that amount of money be spent better elsewhere on a higher priority objective? And then you have many of the previous plan. And unfortunately, public transportation is not very well received.
But then, does that depend on, on the type, I mean, a trolley versus a bus?
My experience, it's, it's based partly on scheduling. And frankly, a desire for people to use their own cars. I mean, I, I, I used what you might call semi-public transportation van pools for many years, both in the DC area and in our area here. And frankly, it was tough to fill it. You know, I was responsible for the one that I was on. And, and I had a challenge to keep enough people on that van so that the county wouldn't shut it down and take it away. And, and they were in fact subsidizing us, not just, you know, as, as a program. They were letting us run with too few people to keep that van on the road. Because they, they had a funding stream associated with it. And, and you could be on this van, and, and that guy would be much happier driving his monster truck from Tacoma into Seattle every day than getting out of Vanpool. Because he had his own control.
Sure.
And, and that, that I think is what makes it a tough sell. You, you can go to other places and, and it's not so much. People seem to have a different mindset. But here, the mindset is I prefer my own vehicle.
Right. And it's, in, in, in my experience, it also is a function of, you know, navigating traffic. How much time are you going to spend sitting in traffic to get somewhere? How much time is going to take you to find a parking spot or something like that? That, that would, will push folks to use, you know, bark in the case of Bay Area in California.
I'm a little different, different, I guess, whether it be DC or Seattle.
Yeah.
And you, you would have to hog time to, to take my car into the city. I just absolutely would not do it unless I had.
Oh. I understand that.
I wanted to really quickly to speak to Commissioner Jordan's point about, you know, just supporting policies or goals with no action. And that's something, that's a great point, and I just wanted to highlight that, that we've had discussions with the consultant, something that the consultant identified very early on in our, in our comp plan. Actually, we were working on the arts and culture element. Some of you will remember a couple of years ago, we added that to the comp plan. We're using the same consultant, and he noted it during that time. He said, this plan doesn't have any actions.
Right.
So that's something that we hope to incorporate in this update to the periodic plan. So if you, or the comp plan, so that we have goals, policies and then actions, something measurable. I think that's getting to your point.
Something more than supporting opportunities kind of thing.
So I have a potential action.
Yay.
Do we have a, like a walking, like a walking path master plan or bike lane master plan?
Excellent.
For the city.
Question, aye.
We have a, we have Gig on the Go.
Gig on the Go, yeah.
Which was something that was done in 2018. That's part of our transportation, it's part of the transportation element.
And that looked at potential or the bike lanes or walking paths we have now, or what did that?
Yeah, I think it looked at both, yeah, I think, I'd have to look at it more carefully to answer the question, so I don't want to speak out of turn. But, but it did, it did an analysis of what we have. They did, they did actual walking audits throughout the city during that time to create that, looking at walkability, especially downtown, and, and where, you know, where you can connect to easily by, you know, on foot and, and I believe by bicycle as well.
Okay.
So what came out of that then was, you know, some changes to the public work standards to require or where we can implement bike lanes.
And more connectivity.
Into the, into our capital projects.
The train is such a challenge, but that would, you know, finding those places that you could connect that weren't a.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. That's true, yeah, we do have that challenge, because we're down in a basin, you know, when you're talking about the harbor.
Yeah.
Right, so that is, that is challenging.
But you do have some big issues about biking in the downtown area. Pain one being, I don't do it because I'm afraid somebody's going to open their door or try to go by.
There's not a dedicated safe place.
Not, you don't have a dedicated pass, I can see it's a safe place to bike.
Great.
That might be a question to ask, you know, the community about how important that is to them, right?
Yeah, that is an important comment, because I, I rarely ride my bike in Gig Harbor. There isn't really any safe place to do so, other than Christian Trail.
Right.
Yeah, Christian Trail is a benefit, yeah, right. So I, I think that's another good question, of course, that's getting into transportation too, but there's synergy between all these elements, so that's a good question.
Right.
And this is what we're getting at right here.
Commissioner Jordan, do you have another question, you still have your hand up?
Yeah, I put my hand back up, thank you, and thank you to the staff. I, I'm glad to hear that, you know, there's got to be actions with it too. Just, and I think we're all kind of saying the same thing, back to the public transportation piece. I just want to kind of acknowledge the obvious, it's my sense that two things are going on, lots are going on in Gig Harbor. One with state Route sixteen kind of being an eyeshot of just about all, you know, downtown or all of Gig Harbor. I think it's hard for folks not to just jump to getting in their car. But the thing that I was really kind of noodling with, and I don't know how you asked this question, the community, and I, and maybe to city council staff kind of conversation, but if the goal is for city, for the city of Gig Harbor to remain what I'll call an affluent, middle class, upper middle class town, my sense is that public transportation will always kind of take a backseat. And I hope that there's a way to kind of figure out what our goal is as, as a community. Do we want to remain an upper, middle class town in Pierce County? And I know that's a weird, hard question. And if it is, it would be great if we could say, here's our budget, or here's, here's the pot of money we have to buy more, rent more buses from Pierce Transit, or to do more sidewalks, or to do bike lanes. And so as you're thinking about asking those questions, there's the policy kind of question, like what kind of community we want to be? And then how we implement our goals. So I don't want to lose that point, but I'm really pleased to hear that, you know, you're thinking about actions too with the goals. So thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, otherwise this really is just kind of an exercise, right? And find this guy, we, we want a path to actually achieve these. And, and part of the update process, as, at least as I envision it, is to see what we have achieved and what we haven't. And, and, you know, how to bridge that. Part of it is looking back as well as looking forward. Walkability related, again, we're looking at, for the harbor specifically, pedestrian friendly environment by emphasizing safety, maintenance and comfort. So policies include limiting the speed limit, maintaining stop signs. I don't know why you wouldn't maintain stop signs, but that's good. Existing level of service for vehicles. Crossings, increased visibility, again, these are safety features. Amenities that make it interesting, landscaping, common areas, seating areas, trash cans, and signage that make it an interesting place to walk. And then clean and healthy walkable environment. Anything jump out in that that either, yeah, doesn't make sense or is missing? Personally, as, as a newish resident, I think, I think the harbor is, is generally a very pedestrian friendly in terms of interest, maybe not all the. I think, I think the harbor is is generally a very pedestrian-friendly, in terms of interest, maybe not all the. You know, crossings are perfect or whatever, but um I think that that's um, that's a pretty decent amenity, what did everybody else think?
I think we're already doing most of this, not all of it.
Yeah.
Uh I think the harbor is a great place to walk.
Yeah.
When I drive through there on a Sunday morning, there's people walking all over the place.
Yeah, yeah.
Sidewalks are a little narrow in some spots.
Yeah.
Um I think that this kind of ties into the our, the bigger transportation plan.
Yeah.
Directly is as far as kind of that pinch point between uh. Uh where stints and comes into Harborview and then the north end of the harbor, and there's so much transient traffic heading for north or east. Um of downtown that goes through there, it does make it less appealing to walk through that area, but um I mean, that would. How that, uh how we can tie those two together and um. Providing, I I don't, um.
You know, about the connection point, then sort of.
Yeah, whether it's something that, there's a way in the greater transportation plan to reroute some of the transient traffic that's just going through that area. Down to improve the walkability, oh, I see, that's the only, you know.
Uh as a roundabout or beyond that, like?
So from the new roundabout around to North Gate Harbor, basically, I mean, either. There's not a lot of good ways to get to East Gate Harbor unless you go through there.
Right, yeah, right.
And it's only gonna be, um greater, right?
Yeah.
And we saw that, right, we see that, there's an accident on sixteen, oh, yeah, yeah, downtown shuts down, it's just gridlock.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of alternative paths, so anyway, that's high end of the.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jordan has just given a gift.
Thank you, um, a couple thoughts on this one, it's great, another great goal, um. I I for the group's consideration, instead of limit the speed limit, how about enforce the speed limits? And then, um I'm not quite sure what promote a clean and healthy walkable environment is. So I just, I don't know what that means, and I think I might, well, maybe I do. And then, um do we need to acknowledge bicyclists here, I know this is about walkability, but um. Is there, is there something we wanna say? Uh about making it also like compatible for bicycles or something like that? Thank you.
You bet.
I guess my only other point on this would be, uh question for. The public would be where, where could we provide better connections to alternative, like whether it's the Cushman Trail or or the um. Uh the kind of that Donkey Creek area that I imagine will have some pass, once that.
Oh, the new conservation area, right?
How how could we better provide connections to kind of expand the walkable area besides just. Beyond me, just Long Harbor View.
Right, again, the connectivity.
Yeah.
Yeah, with that. Excellent.
I think in the signage section there. Um. It would be worthwhile to have. Maybe in a couple of different places. Uh an explanation of the available public transportation. Like, if you wanna get the official trail, you wanna get the grocery store. Uh that kind of practical.
Wayfinding.
Wayfinding.
Wayfinding, is that what you call?
Downtown Waterfront Lines talks a lot about that, yeah, and that is definitely something I've heard from them quite a bit, so I think that that's a. Great point, really good place for something like that.
Excellent.
And that might be a good question to the public, where would those signs best be, getting back to Commissioner Burcar's.
Right.
Comment there, you know, where are the where are where are those benchmarks?
Yeah.
That's, it's a good dot map exercise. I love dots and dots.
I I that just came out, that was, you just revealed something I didn't know that, excellent.
Just along this, uh just along this line, sorry, it was a big debate at the port, some would argue, my boss mainly, signage is not a word. It's, it's. Finding.
signage is not a word.
I think that's probably true.
I make up words all the time.
And.
It's not the worst word I use.
Ah, that's okay, I remember that. All right, well, we'll uh, we'll uh clean up our, clean up our language. Uh that didn't come out, all right, uh okay, I'm gonna move on, if there's anything else, please stop me and I can go back to anything that pops up. Views, protect the views of the bay from within the harbor areas in from the bay toward the harbor. So this is about uh how we treat um, uh in in summer space, how we treat development, so. Require waterfront development to provide for additional docks, paths, walkways, overlooks, picnic and seating areas. Fishing piers or uh or areas uh and viewpoints, um and um a lot of this, yeah. It it references the shoreline management uh program, um so there is some overlap, that's another area where we have to make sure that we're. Um they're consistent. Um and then establish a program that would provide incentives for view corridors that exceed requirements, that was interesting to me. Uh explore opportunities to underground utility lines throughout the harbor. Let's leave just nine, uh recognize that trees and vegetation are assets to do, allow trees and vegetation be part of the view. Both from the water and towards water, panoramic views, when they occur, are not intended to be void of trees and vegetation. Even in the foreground, that was confusing to me, uh limited numbers of trees and shrubs should. Uh uh should not be considered an obstruction to a view. Uh recognize that every tree impacts someone's view to one degree or another, um yeah, that's a policy. Uh establish landscape standards that support the desire to view the bay while walking and driving along Harborview and. Drive throughout harbor areas, sorry, the typos, who's doing this a little fast. Um so that's interesting to me, just that, you know, protect the view, but don't take down all the vegetation.
Seems to be a lot of contradictions.
It is very confusing to me, I'm glad, like, that, but only one, yeah.
Is this typical of comprehensive plans that you've seen? The impression I got when I studied this section was. That if you ask the nine-year-old to define the perfect Christmas, you get a similar kind of doggy, you know.
Keep this and keep this and keep this, do everything.
If what you really want is actions and measurable outcomes. Then you're gonna have to prioritize or take out some of this happy dog, you know.
Again, the trade-offs, right?
And and.
Take a hard stand.
I found it hard to think of anything that wasn't already included in here, so there are a few things, but but not a lot. It it's not a question of defining everything we should be concerned about, it's a question of, if you really want measure of results. How are you gonna prioritize?
Yeah.
In undergrounding the, I don't know, I said that's, that's a specific goal.
Mm hmm.
Well, that's been talked about for decades here, and um, yeah, that's just, I mean, still can did that years ago.
Oh, really?
But I did, the cost would be, I can't imagine.
It's extraordinary, yeah, Senator just required new development to underground, which. Was this weird patchwork quilt of underground and, yeah, anyway.
Well, the utilities have to.
And utilities have to buy into the whole.
Buy into it and agree to it, I mean, I've known a couple of projects downtown that have tried, you know, to do something like that, utilities said, we're not interested. Even if they, even if the developer paid for it.
Really?
Yeah.
I wonder if that's like a maintenance thing, or they can't, whatever, yeah, no.
All of that.
Yeah.
But. Uh I I think it's a great observation, that this is kind of, you know. All all encompassing, what we're trying, what's trying, what we're trying to do here, and and of course, we have lots of standards. Uh in the design manual that speak to some of this stuff, right, and and in our landscape plans currently.
Yeah.
Some, so some of this has been implemented in that way. Definitely some contradictions in here, uh obviously, right, that that certainly I think need to be cleaned up, but. This is a, this is a great example of uh. Of a section that doesn't lead to the action items that, you know, measurable actions that would be. Set, and again, I think Christian Brown said it perfectly, that it has to be sort of a decision made, you have to have a a policy decision, a vision for what that's going to be. And how it would be implemented, and this doesn't really do that, it's kind of a, I want everything, so we're gonna put it all right.
Right, right, and it just sort of, yeah.
Would, would our only question for this event for to ask, probably what views are important to you, or what views do you identify as? Gig Harbor or?
Prioritize views.
Or, yeah, what areas do you see it? See this as an issue, I.
Well, we have a, we have our height restriction area, we have what's considered a view basin, which sort of makes up that height restriction area, and I think a good question, and I think that's a good. Good point, Commissioner Burcar, is it, is that still valid today, is that still important, you know, to to people, because it is a big deal, height restriction area, right? I mean, it's, we deal with it all the time, we've got some really complicated design standards that we have to implement around that, but. The the city felt were important when it was put in place.
Right.
It's limiting, it is very limiting in the downtown area.
Design manuals don't allow for a lot of flat roofs either, does not.
Yeah. Articulation and everything, interest, visual interest, but it's not, i- it's not as though we. Um you know, tell people to cut down their trees when they start to encroach into somebody's view, right? So the view is not, there's not a legal protection to that or or city protection, but, you know, is that, I mean. I I just think it it's interesting, uh recognize that every tree impacts someone's view to one degree or another. It's just kind of a wacky statement, what that made me think of is, is that, that, you know, some of these. Came directly from the kind of public outreach that, you know, we're gonna be engaging in, and, you know, how you. How you incorporate the the the, you know, input that you get from folks and translate that into. Uh an actual policy with some sort of, you know, degree of of measurability or or, you know. Um I'm sure folks said, yeah, that's, no, that's true, that is absolutely true, we want that in there. Um so that's, um, yeah, it's, to me, that that was uh somebody, you know, or a group or whoever. Um articulating that, and that made its way into a policy, which is.
One of the confusing things about what we have here, is is I think what we're really talking about. Is views down along the walking and driving corridor, and and some of these terms seem to reference. Views of private properties a little bit further up the hill.
Hmm.
And and I I'm assuming that those kinds of views, those private views.
Right.
Are are not our concern in this policy, but those along the walking and driving corner.
That's a good question. Is that, is that what we're, you know?
I mean.
Well, again, it goes back to the map of what we're talking about here, so there's a geographical area that this element speaks to, and that's the map that. Robin had earlier, is just in that blue area, that's, and that's largely, well, the height restriction area expands beyond that some. Um but, you know, these policies are meant to be just for that area, which they had defined essentially as the view basin.
Mm hmm.
Back when they created this element.
Right, but yeah. But and that's, again, I think, I think your point is, it it does, but when it, you know, a view, is it, is it worth asking? Yeah, which views, all views, um views from where, I I think those are valid questions to to pose, um.
Commissioner Jordan?
Anything, um, I'm curious, what is it, uh protect the views of the bay from within the harbor areas, so I think I get that. What is protect the bay towards the harbor, is that like if you were in a, on a boat, looking at the harbor?
Yep. I mean, that's my, um, yeah, that's how I read that.
Do we, do we really, um, I'm curious, that's interesting, I never thought about protecting that view from the harbor. Up, you know, around Gig Harbor, that's interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean.
Oh, no, that, yeah, and then I'm wondering, I mean, I think some of the other commissioners were kind of getting at this too. Should we prioritize, like, I would, I would argue, like, views from the public right of way should be the highest priority. To protect. So whether that's walking on the sidewalk or driving on Harborview Drive, or what whatever the case might be. Um and then, you know, private property owners' views and things like that would be a lower priority.
Yep. That is a question, do we prioritize which views, all views, some views? And to what extent? Uh and do these policies achieve, I mean, I I think, um, as Carl uh said, you know. Um the policies and and the regulations that we have in in our design manual, um definitely. Uh go towards this, whether they're sufficient or not is a question.
I I would recommend that you include a question in outreach. That basically says, how well have we done in the last ten years in preserving views? Do you see view corridors as an issue of, or? It should have a high priority. And I, I suspect it would, it would not be, but. I think it's worth asking that question.
I think it's a great question, yeah, I mean, do people want to build in those view corridors, you know, we we have certain setback requirements. That we require in the hypers, or in the. Uh in the height restriction area. Whereby they, you know, you can only build up to, say, you know, you could build, you can build closer on one lot line. But you have to average it out on the other side to get to, you know, twenty-foot corridors, something like that, you can't put a garage in there.
Mm hmm.
A lot of people, I think, would maybe wanna build in that area, rather than protect that view corridor, or if a person uphill from them might disagree.
Right.
Today, you know, but then that person might want the same thing, so I think it's an important question to ask, you know, is 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 that still, is protecting those views still important to this community? Or do we see it as a burden? Or burdensome regulations?
Or uh or commercial businesses.
Or commercial businesses for that matter, at that point, yeah.
Okay. The natural environments, uh protect the native and built environment from, and built environment, that's interesting, from degradation and pollution. And require low-impact development where feasible, um. Encourage open water, that doesn't sound right to me.
How how much development is possible in this area? There's not a lot of moves, so it's pretty built out.
No.
That's.
It's pretty built out.
This would concentrate more on redevelopment.
Uh right, right, good, yeah, good general point.
Yeah, free. Sustainable, yeah, redevelopment.
Yeah.
To be stable.
Um, yeah, I mean, there, yes, we do have some, um, right on the waterfront. The docks, and mostly those are replacing, um occasionally.
You've got a few projects in the waterfront, Seven Seas, you know, the uh. The Pleasure Craft is another place, Layer Moller, uh Net Shed's gonna redevelop over there.
Yeah.
So I I, you know, I think it's still, I think it's still.
I think that's still, that's redevelopment, though.
But it is redevelopment, yeah, yeah, that's, right, that's a good point.
Right.
Going through this whole thing, there was a lot about new development, where we don't have a lot of space for that at that point.
That is true, that is true. Um so, uh yeah, conserve native vegetational shores, that's uh required under our shoreline management. Um program, uh well-vegetated shorelines, preferred deaths, uh. Um over clearing to create views or provide lawns, uh kind of a smackdown on law. Um limited, so like to be in clearing for views and lawns should be allowed where slope stability and ecological function. Uh are not compromised, um trimming and printing, um instead of taking out. Environmental protection incentives to strengthen the ecological functions in the harbor. Uh open-ended as well, preserve and protect habitat, which provides the shoreline's unique value, uh present brief, don't be briefly called out. Um all the other protected habitat areas that we have, uh and then um maintain and enhance the quantity and quality of. Uh water surface and groundwater. Um you're managing the evocation, construction operation and maintenance of shoreline uses and develops, that's a lot. Um kind of rolled into one.
It's it's kind of worrying.
Yeah.
And as I read it, uh the policies are environmental important. Uh but we use the words degradation and pollution.
Yeah.
Which that particular language doesn't seem to fit what we say in the policies.
I agree. Yeah, it's, yeah, I I agree with you.
Is there something unique about surf smell and sand lake?
You said, no, because I didn't know what they were, I was like, I'm just gonna put that in there, I mean, it's in the policy.
Those are, those are forage fish, those are the fish that live up close to the shoreline, and they hide out in the eau grass, I mean, under the shade of trees. And then the larger fish eat on them, so they don't exist, and. So they don't exist and the, and the salmon can't survive.
Okay. Right. So, yeah, I mean, it'd be helpful, you know, to.
For the simplification of this, we send a lot of this to the shoreline management plan.
A lot of this.
The shoreline management plan.
Most of, most of this is already being implemented there. Yeah, that's the thing is that this is kind of regurgitating stuff that, and maybe it's, you know, maybe it's already achieved, you know, right?
Right.
Achieved a lot of this, or at least we've, we've implemented much of this.
Right, so my question would be, you know, what are we missing? I mean, are there, is there degradation and pollution that, uh, that's getting by? Um, and we're not seeing it or we haven't captured it in, um, our normal review?
I guess what an outreach question be, what, where would you see, um, an opportunity to enhance the environmental?
Excellent.
Condition in the harbor, I mean.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jordan?
Hey, yeah, this to me, it looks like it's all written on behalf of like the shoreline. Um, and I'm not sure if that was the intent or not, but a, a kind of a policy question. So this is a comp plan update, right, under GMA?
Huh?
And I thought under SMP, that first 200 feet did not, uh, they didn't overlap. They were managed separately.
Managed separately.
Well, like the pol- the, the policy that manages the first 200 feet from ordinary high waters is the shoreline management program, right? And I thought GMA started after that, 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 uh, 200 foot from ordinary high sh- ordinary high water.
Don't know if they're exclusive. I don't, I, I honestly don't know, um, in terms of, you know, who's on first, like jurisdictionally. Um, but I don't know that, that, uh, just because the shoreline management is, is sort of the operating regulation that, that we, uh, adhere to, that that means that we can't speak to it in our comp plan.
Yeah.
Right, I mean.
As long as they don't conflict, right?
Exactly. That's, yeah, that's where we look at, yeah, the consistency and, yeah.
Right, um, this natural environment though, to me, everything that I'm reading here, and maybe that was the intent, really looks like it's this, it really looks like we're just describing work or activities within that 200 foot zone. Um, and maybe that's intentional. Um, and then, uh, encourage open water and sustainable land development building practices in the construction of new development. How about maintenance? Do we want to include those kind of, um, development best practices as part of maintenance program? Like if you're, you know, repairing your bulkhead or if you're, you know, repairing a building?
Yep. Yeah, again, that's that new development that pops in as if we're randomly building new stuff. Um, yeah, excellent.
The shoreline master program is interesting in that, you know, it's kind of part of, it's part and parcel technically of the comp plan. And in fact, state law calls it out as something that can be, uh, that can be updated outside of the typical GMA required comp plan updates annually, right? Annually, we're allowed to update the comp plan once a year, except for these exceptions. The shoreline master program happens to be one of those. So the shoreline master program is in, in essence, a policy document as well as the implementing
Regulations.
Regulations for those policies, all sort of combined in one.
Right.
Uh, which makes it, you know, unique in that sense. And so it is weird, it is awkward to have that and these policies here. And I think that's because of the, because of this is the harbor.
Right.
Element, they were trying to speak to that in some way. And I, I think even in a previous element or section we were just looking at, they actually called out the shoreline master program, right?
It did.
It's kind of odd.
To make it more confusing though, there's another element that is the shoreline management element, element. So that's, um, even more interesting and I haven't gone to compare and contrast, but we have. And, and there's nothing inherently wrong with having, you know, duplicate policies in different sections. And sometimes that's inherent because there is so much bleed over and overlap. Um, but yeah, when we get to that, we'll, um, we'll have some of the same discussion and, and.
But Robin, can I ask, um, don't we want this harbor element or, uh, or the harbor and this natural environment goal? Don't we want it more than just that 200 feet? I mean, don't we want it to talk about all of the harbor or that map? Yeah.
Yeah, excellent. Now, I think that goes to, yeah, where, uh, sort of, uh, piggybacking on, on the comment about, um, the question, where would you see an opportunity to enhance one of the areas of the harbor that are not being covered? Uh, you know, um, by these existing policies? And that's a question for us and something to, to put out there. But I think that's a great observation, like you said, um, yeah.
Thanks.
I agree.
What I read this is, do you have any current, um, environmental protection incentives?
Yes, I don't know if we, I mean, we get grants from time to time to, to, um, you know, the work, um, that's going to be done, uh, Downey Creek and, and some of those things, we, I mean, we get, we get grant money, I don't know.
There's county programs, you know, where you can conserve your property and get tax breaks.
Renew the basives and things like that, maybe outreach question is what incentives?
What incentives?
What would incentivize you?
You do.
Would be motivating.
Whatever, redo the bulkhead.
Yeah, we don't have a, we don't have a, a bulkhead program like that here. There are, those programs exist and I think people can get into them and we can promote them.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, I've, I've come across a couple of those that I've kind of noted, but we don't, we don't have anything specifically, but there are programs that people can, could utilize and we could do a better job of facilitating advertising, that those exist and try and promote them within the harbor to get people to go to soft, especially that one is a really important.
Yeah.
Far better.
Yeah, even knowing that that exists and then, yeah, partnering up, great.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good word.
Really good. Okay, moving on to city properties and parks. Of course, we do have a parks, uh, plan and elements. Establish and manage a well-balanced system of public properties along the waterfront of the harbor to meet the needs and desires of the community, uh, create complimentary parks and uses throughout the harbor, balance services and active recreational uses for all users. Develop existing publicly owned shoreline properties to provide additional public access where appropriate. Make sure active and passive recreational uses that are intrude on natural features. I think, um, I think the city's done a pretty good job of that. Uh, coordinating, or coordinate with outside public and private agencies, organizations to acquire and preserve additional shoreline and open, open water access. Maintain those parks, uh, maintain that, those parks are available for public use and uses that provide the greatest public benefit of citizens and visitors. Thoughts on our public properties and parks in mostly the downtown, I'm thinking of, but yeah, throughout the harbor area?
Well, I would say it's a little verbose. And I, I, I love the idea that I, as, as I read that and I, I think about the area we're talking about. I think, well, under the Downey Creek, where are you going to put a park?
Yeah.
I think we, I think this goal has been largely achieved.
I think we have a lot of really great properties down along the waterfront that.
I think this could maybe transition to how do we best use our?
Yeah.
Parks or, or what's the, um, you know, how could we better use or better utilize and for? Intermassive, I guess.
Well, if you look at some other waterfront communities like Falls Bow or Olympia, they've made big investments in infrastructure for visiting voters.
I know.
And we have not. And I've not, uh, and, and I think it would be, I don't know whether this is the right place to raise that issue or not. But it may be because we're talking about a, a public facility, but might be an enlarged visiting dock
Hmm.
with some other facilities similar to what they have in Falls Bow or, or Olympia.
Hmm.
And the question I think that you might want to raise, uh, is how important is that to our residents? Uh, because they may.
Serving them.
Yeah, they may think.
Public community.
You know, we, we don't want to spend much time or money or effort in encouraging visiting voters. On the other hand, the merchants would probably see a terrific benefit in it. So I think it would be a useful question.
I think we, well, we have actually several facilities now. I mean, new, um, park down there has showers and then there's, there are some pretty good facilities. We don't have a lot of dock space.
They're comparable to what?
Right, but my thought is in the harbor, most of the boat, visiting boats anchor out. So having more of this facilities that would allow digging access, I think would be
Hmm.
more important than putting a lot more dock space in.
Well, I, I think if you looked at what's available in Olympia or in Falls Bow, you'd see a significant difference in the types and, and.
Facilities.
Availability of facilities.
Yeah, I think we have, yeah.
And the question is, if it's, if it was, if it was worthwhile for them to do it in those places.
Right.
Is it appropriate to consider doing it here? And, you know, part of the answer to that question is what are residents thinking about it?
Right.
Hmm.
Visitors in general, and visitors by boat, by car, by boat, by bike. Um, but I think that's a great question. And actually, there is, um, uh, another goal, uh, or policy that, uh, addresses, um, issues around, uh, boating specifically. Um, so we'll, we'll revisit that, um, in a little bit. Uh, anything else on our parks or city properties in the harbor? All right, move on. Uh, historic character, retain and protect the unique character of historic business and residential neighborhoods uh, with, uh, harbors, I agree. Uh, keep editor, um, maintain the design manual. So there's a reference to the design manual to reflect the traditional characteristics of the harbor. Uh, establish defined integrity of small planning areas which have common boundaries, uses and concerns. Using transition land use areas and buffers and more open space. Design standards and development regs shall recognize and complement neighborhood characteristics, uh, setbacks, high building size standards. Um, and, uh, much of that is in our design manual currently or certainly, um, our historic, uh, district, um, review. Lot size standards and previous coverage requirements to allow development patterns consistent with historic densities. Uh, lot vision, uh, size compatibility with historicals. Um, encourage building forms, again, uh, consistent with existing historic designs. Massing roof style and scale, that is all part of our design manual. And then, um, respecting existing topography, minimizing, uh, use of grading, um, and stepping the painting walls and such, again, not modifying this property. Um, anybody comments on historic character?
And it seems to me like this is already incorporated into the design manual.
I.
Is the design manual actually referenced in the text?
Yes.
It, yeah, yeah, this, this is all.
Maintain the design manuals reflect the traditional characteristics of the harbor.
Yeah, and that sets kind of the tone. Everything else is a little bit redundant, but that's, um, where it, you know, goes into individual uh, coordinate standards and such, um, that is all incorporated into the design.
Maybe that's all you need to say here.
Stop at policy one. Yeah.
I would propose an outreach question and can you define the unique character of the harbor?
The unique historic character.
Character.
Historical character.
Oh, retain the character of the unique character of the story. Yeah, the, what is the unique character?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And go with that.
I love that. Get two stars on that one. Yeah, no, I, that's, and, and in other contexts, you know, when you talk about character, um, it's, it's become a little bit of a sort of double edged sword, um, you know, protecting like, no, we can't change this, nothing new, nothing different, no new, you know, architecture or anything else. Um, sort of, you know, in a dynamic environment, um, that's, that's sometimes a tough, a tough ask.
Well, it makes it, yeah, it makes it, it's so subjective.
Yeah.
Um, but I, the other thought I had on this too was it deals a lot with development where really we're looking at redevelopment.
Redevelopment, any modification, yeah.
So, um, I, you know, given our population demands too, I mean, I'll say the evil word, word density.
Yeah.
Uh, that I don't really, I don't really see how we can avoid increasing, but, um, anyway.
So when you, when you do talk about, uh, you know, development versus redevelopment and then you talk about density and then there's this third policy item here that talks about getting back to historic densities uh, or historical standards, which of course are, or historic development patterns, which of course are not defined here. So it leaves the reader sort of thinking, okay, well, I'll kind of come up with that idea on my own.
Yeah.
So that's useless in that sense, right? It really needs to be defined, but then you do talk about small lot sizes, right? And so you could be talking about redevelopment in that sense. If you're defining development as a short plan.
You have to, I think this question is, is very important.
Yeah.
Because, uh, you, you, you're looking at how you're going to define the character of the community. It was originally developed in kind of a haphazard manner.
Sure.
People will. Always organic, right? Yeah.
Is that what we want to maintain, uh, other communities? Some Falls Bow, Havenworth, you can name many number of them that have in terms of redevelopment, uh, wanted to establish a specific community character.
Hmm.
Uh, so that that development would be along that same line.
Right.
Uh, it is something like that, the direction of.
Right.
And we saw this, we see the same thing up, up the road in Port Orchard. Kind of ratty now, but they, they did that same idea back in sixties or seventies.
No.
Okay, then.
Yeah.
Oh.
And that's where you see all the covered walkways.
Yeah.
That was part of their, uh.
Right, block field.
Redevelopment, trying to save the downtown area four and 50 years ago.
Yeah.
It works for a lot.
Sort of a theme to design.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is part of, yeah, identity and, and every community to, you know, to some degree or another wrestles with, you know, yeah, who are we and, and is there, are there there? Um, and as things change, um, you can lose that. And it's, it's an interesting comparison to.
I, I think, uh, the, the definition of, of what that character is, not, not necessarily preserving something that, you know, existed 50 or 60 years ago or 50 years ago. What is it we, we want to do, to look like going forward?
Fundamental question.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, defining the, the unique character, I think that's, that's important.
Yeah. Yeah, sensible place. Um, okay, great, thanks, this is really good stuff. Um, historic scale. Uh, encourage maintenance and or adaptive reuse of existing structures. So here's your redevelopment, uh, if existing structures cannot be practically preserved or modified, ensure that redevelopment, uh, complements the human form and historically recognized scale of commercial and residential structures within the harbor. Raise a similar question perhaps, uh, allow retention of existing height setbacks enassing of historic structures which are renovated, uh, so grandfathering kind of these there. Maintain appropriate scale relationship between structures and, uh, residential and commercial neighborhoods, uh, specifically at points where zones meet. Uh, encourage houses which engage the neighborhood through front porch design, window placement, et cetera. Encourage quality building materials, this is learning, uh, but no, we don't, we don't convert. That reflects the harbor's historic structures, uh, yeah. Uh, support architectural design that respects and complements the built environment in relation to the, to the history and cultural aspect of the harbor. Harbor is considered eligible for the city's historic register, have an important historical value and should be carefully preserved as close to their original forms of class. Uh, zoning, financial and design incentives and adaptive reuse provisions for eligible properties and those, uh, on the register to streamline the permitting to encourage preservation of such structures. Uh, refine the historic district zoning boundaries. I thought that was interesting, goes back to, I think, um, um, the conversation we had earlier about what's historic and what deserves to be in that, what it deserves. But what do we, what does the community think should? Um the conversation we had earlier about what's historic and what deserves to be in that, what it deserves, but what do we, what does the community think should be in. Uh the boundaries of that uh district to better reflect each district or neighborhood.
Well, that are in the districts and neighborhoods defined that present.
The district is, I don't know.
We have designed, well, we also have design areas, neighborhoods defined within the comp plan. That were created back in twenty, I think, twenty fourteen, this the last cycle. Uh and the idea behind those was sort of this idea of what we call now form based codes, uh and they were thinking about. Form based codes within each of those design areas and making them distinct areas that you would drive in and you'd say, oh, here I am in. This area of Gate Harbor and it looks like this. Uh the design manual is sort of a hype, it's a quasi, it's a hybrid uh form based code versus Euclidean kind of. It fluctuates, you know, our code sort of has both pieces of it, so we we kind of went one way, but we didn't go all the way, right? Is what we did, and then we never did anything with those design areas.
Right.
That are defined in the comp plan, they just created them and then nothing was done with them, there was no implementation.
Pretty complicated.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Uh and along with that, we have centers of local importance too, right? That's another sort of area within the comp plan that created. Well, had designs on being sort of our central. Yeah, exactly, that we can be focused on more intense development and then the idea then is of course to connect those. Centers through corridor centers, there's a old centers of corridors, planning style, it's been around for a long time, but the county. Um has implemented that through centers of local importance onto centers of regional, regional centers.
Alright.
And all that to to industrial, so you got to start at the bottom level in order to get to the others.
Um but yeah, I I mean, I like the idea of, you know, uh putting up the boundaries and seeing if folks think that those are. Uh maybe not the neighborhoods, but the historic district, I'd be interested in what what the input.
Well, we got enough. I think I know what you mean by the historic scale. But that that term begs a definition.
Yeah, right, well, and this is all about protecting, you know, the city was was real concerned about box stores coming in. Target. Uh Kirkland, you know, Costco coming in, uh what those and if they did, what they would look like. Uh and so they were very concerned and I think the community probably is still concerned, well, it's a good question to ask them. About a box store coming into downtown, you know, like a, you know, a big, a big box happening at the Peninsula Shopping Center, for instance. Which would be a place where you could really fit something like that in. But I think the city was concerned about something like that happening, you know, some redevelopment coming in and, you know, we we ending up with. Corporate uh entities in the in the harbor.
Carolyn, that raises an interesting question that you mentioned Peninsula Shopping Center, and that's maybe a question we should should be an outreach question is. How should that area be redeveloped?
Yeah. Downtown Water Alliance talked a lot about that too.
Yeah.
That's right, the guy. Held everything, I mean, grocery, hardware and drugstore.
Now it's gone.
Yeah.
I think the bank is gone now too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Post office.
Wanted to move for a long time.
Yeah, really?
Yeah, they they want a new site, they they were looking, they've been looking for a new site for the past.
Uh.
I don't know, a number of years, ten years or something, I think they've been talking to the city about that, where where they should go.
Interesting. Um.
That's that's very unfortunate, that change, but it is gonna have to be addressed.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a good question, I think it's something definitely that should be asked.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know how historic scale, I mean, with reference to the harbor and. Um what a good outreach question would be. In a sense, whether um. Person values historic scale to define.
Well, it it seems to me that this piece of real estate that we're talking about here is. Something that every resident uh feels uh. Is the definition of of Gengar, and it's what you see when you drive through, it's what you see when you walk through. And I think a good outreach question might be something like, you know, looking at this piece of real estate. And I would change that illustration, get rid of the blue outline, which is hard to see and. Outline it in in white or yellow or something, so people can look at that and know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
And and the question really is, how, how good a job has the city done in in maintaining the historic integrity? Of this patch of Gate Harbor over the last ten years, and if you don't think they've done a a really good job, what what? What were the problems?
Yeah, yeah, as you drive in the tides and.
Yeah, basically, that's it, yeah.
Well, less about whether what the city has done and whether or not the 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 codes and policies have worked and were put in place.
Right.
Sure, yeah.
Right.
Cause we don't, yeah, I don't build.
Do we know why um companies like QFC left downtown?
I don't.
Grocery store?
You know, grocery store, Ace Hardware, what, do we know why they chose to to close down those particular stores? Instead of those up in the Point Fosdick area?
I don't, I I wasn't around here during that time to know, I mean, we could ask the same question to some of the businesses that are closing down down there right now.
Yeah.
Right, Harberton?
Yeah, general.
There's a few right now.
And there are lots of, yeah, yeah.
And the Downtown Water Alliance again is is looking very closely at that.
Um, yeah.
And talking a lot about it and and the city is talking, the city staff's talking a lot about it too, you know, what what can be done, I mean, there is only so much that. Can be done, right, but.
I I don't have a question suggest. But it it centers on the idea of. Other communities when they have a dying downtown. Uh they they've done things to to create business opportunities which are primarily tourist oriented. Uh a lot, lots of um. You know, basically gift stores and 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 maybe secondhand stores and those kinds of things, which. From my perspective, uh is an undesirable downtown area. It's an area where locals really don't go, uh be because there's nothing you need there on a daily basis. And and I would not want to see Geng Harvard adopt that kind of a model. As we look at businesses that are now leaving, and what might replace them.
Good point.
Yeah, it's economic development, right?
Yeah.
Uh that's, we do have that element that we'll be looking at as well, you know, at some point, it does.
And there's.
The interesting thing about this element of the harbor is that, and that's why it's a great place to start, because it, even though it's a small area. Geographical area that we're talking about, it encompasses all of the different elements, you know, each time, each time we we touched on shoreline master program, we've already hit on. Historic district design manual, you know, so that does, it does make it kind of interesting, and and it's. It's an odd element.
Yeah.
In general, right? It's meant to be sort of a visionary element for that area of town.
Mm hmm.
But it touches on all of these other little pieces that do have ripple effects throughout the city as well, so.
It is our identity.
Is our identity, and it's the visionary element, right? I think is is meant to be. Sorry.
Well, I I was just gonna say, since some of these structures could be redeveloped as park. Or or the Peninsula Shopping Center um redeveloped as even smaller. Business fronts that they're somewhat more independent visually, as opposed to the one long big old shopping center model.
Yeah, that's kind of an.
But to to focus on on the small businesses, well, big business don't like downtown. Uh it was too hard to get there, they they want volume, and you you don't get the volume down here or downtown, like. You already have the volume up in Point Fosdick area or, you know, I'm bored of them. So, you know, they're bringing a little bit bigger entity downtown almost as a strong starter for these kinds of outfits.
And the University of Washington do a master plan for that area?
They did, yeah, twice, actually, we've got two, yeah, two examples, they're not anywhere online, we've got just little. Booklets of those um studies that they did, and we have another study. Uh Judson Street study that was done that I think the city actually commissioned a few number of years ago. Uh you know, these things were, those were the two University of Washington projects were uh store storefront studios, I think they call them. And planning, you know, little planning books, they're great, and they're actually, they're actually pretty good, they have some, they have some pretty good ideas in them.
It may be interesting to incorporate that, incorporate that in the outreach.
So there are a lot of different models out there.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, though, making, may maybe making that stuff available. Might help generate some.
Ideas.
At least the discussion.
Yes, I was thinking of a community that has a huge defunct shopping mall. Uh and they fenced it off and and have sheep in the parking lot to keep the grass and. So there, there's a unique visualization.
Yeah, um it's interesting, it just, I know, we've got a ways to go still. Um but, you know, incentives um are. I mean, it's almost all that we can do is provide some sort of incentives for, you know, certain types of developments. Um but you you raised Port Orchard a little while ago and I I live in Port Orchard and and we drive through downtown and. And just bemoan, like, apparently, one of the, one of the issues uh according to uh Jen Harrow is. That the vast majority of the downtown uh property is owned by one family. And they're just sitting on it, and there are, you know, a couple of boarded up buildings that have just been sitting and sitting and sitting since we moved there. And there's no incentive to develop, unless you want to do some sort of eminent domain, which um would not be popular and probably wouldn't work. There's really, I mean, it's hard to, you know, to motivate folks unless you give them a really big carrot, so.
Probably would another outreach question be, what kind of businesses would you like to see?
Trader Joe's. It's a planning joke, all planners uh get asked by their.
Trader Joe's.
Can you get us a Trader Joe's? I know, but their demo products are very specific, they, yeah, they tried to get one in in um. In Watsonville, uh down near Santa Cruz, and they laughed, that was. Uh hurtful.
Well, they're, they're, I think they're called albums, but there there are a couple of. Market chains that that are growing in popularity whose whose specific business model is. Much smaller local stores, even smaller than someplace like Trader Joe's.
Yeah.
Like like.
Like a Harbor Green.
Stores used to be years ago, when when I was growing up, uh within six or eight blocks. Uh where I lived, there were literally six of these these little kinds of storefront markets. Um and and, you know, there was no supermarket, we we just didn't go to those places, right?
Yeah.
And but that that business model seems to have just disappeared.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we had bin halls and brickways downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Um, all right, we will, we will see what people want and see uh if folks can, you know. Provide some interesting incentives, uh there is, uh there's another design piece, um we can do this, but there is an economic development. Um. Uh goal um that we'll uh we'll get to as well, so uh remote highest quality design standards for future development. Again, what development, um within the harbor which recognize unique historic character and structures of the harbor. Uh emphasize public orientation, common areas direct access from surrounding public streets. Um discourage blind walls and privacy fences, uh incentives to encourage mixed use structures. Uh visual points of interest, uh buildings and landscape design viewable from public streets. Uh complimenting uh landscaping, minimize asphalt coverage, first we have standards that address um. Uh hard surface, very surface, standard parking requirements, this will come up a few times, uh have prompted removal of structures characteristic. Of the harbors, historical developments, and have encouraged bleak expanses of asphalt along the waterfront. To counter this trend, considerations should be given to revised parking standards for waterfront districts, that is very much a hot topic right now. Uh development of offsite parking areas, public and private, and or shared, uh use of low impact development, paving materials. Uh parking standards shall respect neighborhoods and limit impacts, so whatever that means. Um maintain a balance in land use development, uh so that the number of viewpoints. Uh uh any single structure uh does not overpower or detract from the other human scale.
Or do the parking standards design, we're going to define them.
In our.
Gate Harbor municipal code seventeen seventy two.
Yeah.
There.
Specifically.
Right.
But we also have standards about, uh we have some standards in our landscaping code regarding. How they should be landscaped, both internally and and on the perimeter.
Buffers and stuff, yeah.
And we have some standards in the design manual relative to to what was parking lot should look like as as well.
Right, but that's that's.
Where they should be located in relationship to the structures.
Right, right, so you're not looking at expanses of parking lots, we're seeing parking as the first thing. Um but the parking standards, particularly for um our commercial businesses, that's that is a big question.
That's very important. Parking is very much a premium business.
Well, it is at times, but I mean, the parking, the parking studies, at least in this area in the harbor. The parking studies that the Downtown Water Alliance has been doing since two thousand eight, I think it is, show that we have ample parking.
I mean, I never drive through there when I I don't find the the street parking is essentially.
Yeah, it 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 usually is like when you're coming downtown, which is probably when you're coming downtown for an event or something like that, right? When there's something happening down there, then there is no parking, and that's true, but otherwise.
Yeah.
The studies show that there's actually ample parking downtown and there's even, and there's what what's. Really interesting is that they've started to do surveys on the private parking that's unused, so. In church parking lots, in business parking lots, in those areas where.
There's a lot of parking downtown.
Yeah, and the arenas, you know, they're they're hardly used.
It's very tiny, I feel, there's two new repaved parking lots, the two main arenas downtown, I mean, those are large.
Yeah.
Expanse of asphalt.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, I and I don't know what the other solution, I mean, you're going out in your boat, you don't want to have to haul your stuff down in the bus, so.
Yeah, right.
So it's, um, I don't know what the alternative is, but.
Yeah.
It's um, it's a lot of self reuse, this is good again.
Yeah, and and the other thing that we talk a lot about is the where the folks, the folks who work downtown, where do they park? Oftentimes, they're parking on the street, and so when you want to go to that restaurant or whatever it is that you're visiting downtown, sometimes they're parking. The business that you're trying to visit, and so Downtown Water Alliance has been working with the businesses, trying to discourage that. And order to come up with another plan for where those folks could park, that is.
Issue in Northgate Harbor.
North, I said north harbors, yeah, very different.
Binwell does have a parking problem, that's the one area that really does have a parking problem in Gengar, there and there are no easy solutions.
Right, and it has been limiting for businesses.
Yeah.
Uh that wanted to span the number of seats, for instance, so it it's it's not uniform across. Uh harbor, the the downtown, but um but there are some some pinch points. Um so maybe just a a question about um perceived issues or, you know, parking problems, um. The other sort of questions pop up. Go on, hour and a half, because you're probably getting a little a little tougher, all right, moving on, uh cultural heritage. Uh support and enhance recognition of the cultural heritage of the harbor, uh commercial fishing. Uh support and enhance recognition of the cultural heritage of the harbor. Uh commercial fishing fleet is uh called out as significant. Uh identify, preserve, enhance, promote the evolution of a harbor's harbor's multicultural. Human history of its neighborhoods, traditions, cultural features, historic sites, buildings, artworks, objects, but. Um, identify and incorporate significant uh historic and cultural uh sites into the public waterfront. Uh support the development of elaborate educational programs focusing on the harbor's cultural heritage. Uh support organizations that provide programs and activities to public. Uh encourage owners of historic sites uh to provide increased public access through some uh incentive program. Uh support and promote signage and the image comes back landmarks to educate the public on the harbor's culture and history. Questions, comments?
I know the Harbor History Museum I heard was working on a master plan. It's what I heard, it's a very fine, uh so this can be somewhat timely for. Then um a master plan for this, for that site.
For their site.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not sure what all they own down there, but but.
Um, okay, well, we'll, I'll see, but they're obviously.
Maybe an outreach.
Part of this, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I I I had some notes of just that, you know, about the the dragon boats and the. And kayak club, uh you know, some of those kind of newer cultural elements um. That made group beneficial and some outreach, um as well as, I guess, harbor wildlife and these, things like that that um they add some. Over here to this section.
Nice. Yeah, and I, yeah, hoping to get those uh. Involve them in our outreach.
Yeah.
Specifically, yeah.
Maybe to kind of, yeah, update this.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jordan?
Hey, thank you. Um, I wonder if there's an opportunity here to call out the um. Uh it's part of the update to call out the P L travel unions and a partnership with them.
Yes, oh absolutely, yeah. Yeah, it's interesting that I know um our tribal partners, you know, um. Kind of show up, but it's it's a bleak in in this piece to me, sort of, you know, multicultural heritage, human history. Um, it was surprising to me that our, the tribes, specifically Q L, is not called out. Um, in that sort of multicultural heritage, um, just struck me.
That's a very good point.
Right, like, why wouldn't you point out to our primaries?
Much coordination in this document was produced.
That's probably true. That's been more recent, but you've really got a really good relationship with the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think you definitely want to add that here.
We've always noticed them in all projects and things and solicited comment for now, we have, there really is solidified.
Yeah.
Partnership with them over here, which has been, it's been good.
And they're certainly going to be part of of the outreach efforts. Um.
What are, what are your thoughts on commercial fishing fleet?
Comes later in the.
That comes later, yes, that's the section, but yes, we like.
Well, we noted here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do note it is something that's a cultural resource here, is that still something that resonates?
Yeah. I mean, it's a big part of the harbor history museum.
So, yeah, that that I, that's an interesting question. Is there more, I mean, do they, do they need our support? Like explicit support, the fleet, like, yeah.
Well, there's always been, you know, the the city's kind of always identified with that fishing fleet, you know, and. Yeah, we've always, there there's definitely been a lot of support for them over the years. We're building the home, their home court, right? Yeah, so that's uh, that's something that. Say, and that's a partnership with them, but I I think, you know, there's. The city's changing over time, that industry is changing over time, and I just, I I'm interested uh personally. To hear from the community and whether or not they still.
That time.
Not to say want to leave them behind or not trying to say that we don't want to support the fishing fleet, you know, I'm all about fishing, I love fish, you know. And I think it's a great industry that.
Yeah.
You know, I love the old industries that are, you know, still trying to hang on, but I think it's an interesting question with this. New, you know, influx of, our demographic has changed over the last twenty years, big time. And so I think it's interesting to to think about that, and I wonder. How that resonates with folks who have moved into the community who worked there before.
Really don't know what support means.
Right.
In this context, that that kind of question can answer that.
Yeah, I it is, I just, interesting statement, is meant to support, the commercial fishing fleet has a significant cultural re- resource. So you put it in that context, what does that mean exactly?
Maybe you better work to be recognized.
Sure.
Recognize commercial.
That's why we have the maritime festival.
Yeah.
Right, maritime festival. So supporting them, I mean, so that in some, in some ways, we talked about it as a significant cultural resource, like, you know, it's like, how do we. Support their culture.
Well, school district no longer recognizes them as agricultural.
That's right, the school district cut off the program.
Yeah.
They had.
So if kids are fishing, it used to be kids could fish and they could start school late and they wouldn't get damed. Now the school no longer recognizes fishing as agricultural importance to this area.
So that's that, that's, and that's kind of where I was going, this.
Yeah, that's a trend.
That, I think it's, it's shifting just a little bit, you know, that sort of lexicon, it's like, it's changing just a bit right now. Which is that, and and if it is, is that something that is important to this community that we bolster that? To say something more than just support the commercial fishing fleet as a cultural resource, that's not what we're saying, anything or doing anything. Getting back to Commissioner Jordan's. Idea, you know, this plan doesn't speak to action, you know, or just.
There's Harvard here, sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they are, well, partly because they don't have enough mortgage here, so the home court supposedly is going to help with that. The commercial fleet says that, the fishing fleet says that it will, and also we don't have fuel here, so getting back to, I think, Commissioner Brown's. Uh concerns about, you know, what we offer, visiting voters and the infrastructure we have for them, that's also true of. Fishing fleet.
We addressed that though later on.
Yeah.
That's true, there is, I know there's another page for that, I'm getting off topic, just a little bit, but I think the, that this statement. Is not nearly enough if we still do consider them a significant cultural resource within this.
We also consider them an economic source.
Absolutely.
Right, absolutely, yeah. Historically, we have anywhere, right?
Yeah.
Does that still ring true, though? What does, what what do they drink?
Yeah.
Scholarships and a lot of things.
Um, vibrant scene, um, support the diversity of the harbor through a balance of uses, retain support and mix, uh including fishing. Boating, retail, commercial and residential uses, uh promote job housing balance in the harbor. Current and future of this. Encourage uh corporate, commercial and retail services at street level to improve the pedestrian experience, even putting that. Uh increase uh residential mixed use in commercial nodes and create a balance between services, amenities and uses. Within the harbor to be accessible by all. Questions, anything we haven't touched on before? Is this, I mean, jobs, counting? Know how much.
Kind of touched on this a little bit earlier, when somebody said what sort of businesses would you want to see in the downtown area, sort of a mix of businesses a little bit. Bradbury was saying too, with, you know, getting back to like the scale of businesses downtown.
Right. This brings in uh jobs, so we've talked about what sorts of businesses, people, you know, wants frequent. But which types of businesses, you know, uh provide uh measurable local jobs. Uh, Commissioner Jordan says, you know that.
Yeah, this um, something we could think about, back to the other goal that included this is local businesses. And. Um, anyway, local retail and it's uh businesses as opposed to like the big box and things like that.
Yep. Yep.
My thought on this was, I I kind of thought about the um, I know the summertime activities in the park and the big crowds and. Things that that draws, what, I guess, what more can you do to kind of maybe, that having those big huge events, maybe kind of. Level that out for more smaller events or or what um. Maybe there's an opportunity for a a more um year-round public performance place. Mixed views, kind of, even meeting hall kind of building, or or something like that, um maybe what people's. Thoughts or ideas were on that, in that respect, like a formal art center, sort of.
Social club.
Yeah, yeah, even, yeah, I don't, it seems like maybe, um, yeah, a a shared use space like that could encompass all that.
I like, I like the idea of the shared um.
Yeah, performance or meetings or training or.
Yeah.
Even just event space, there's.
Yeah.
Lot of events, I know that, you know, in the churches and the alcohol, there's not a lot of event space.
Yeah, and I was actually, uh, as I was looking at the. Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I was looking at the calendar events, you know, to to look for opportunities for, you know. Um outreach and and giving people's feedback on on our content. I was surprised at how few events. At least on the sort of, you know, community, I mean, different parts of the the city and like you're talking about, you know. Churches or service clubs or whatever, but um, but in the downtown, uh not that much, um really, and of course. Almost all focused uh late spring and summer, um so I like that, um, see what ideas we can generate from folks. Um, what kinds of uh events and and or uses they want to see, we don't know now.
Didn't we used to have a community theater group?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, they were in the Peninsula Shopping Center, actually. They were someplace else, then they went to Peninsula Shopping Center. And then they moved to, is that where they moved to after that?
No, they had, they had a lot by the little lake field. Yeah, and then they moved to the downtown.
And then they folded maybe after.
They went to a place in Port Orchard that wasn't actually applicable yet, and they were in there.
They were really successful at Peninsula Shopping Center, but they 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 sold, they sold, they sold it out every time, yeah, they sold that out all with a little community theater. That's a great point, though, that's something that's definitely missing from, from this, I think, from the statement. And I think that's important to find out from the community if that's something that they're interested in too, you know, you, so when you start to think about that. You have to start to think about public-private partnerships, is that something that the community is willing to? Put their, you know, resources into, right, they have a stomach for that kind of thing.
Yeah, so it's a winner.
There, there's many tentacles to this problem, and then one of them is money.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Property values are so high, and it makes it very difficult for small business to make it.
Those.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Hard for a private operator to come in and go to the theater.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's where a big enough partnership could be, yeah.
And again, you're fighting, you know, you're fighting the online, this same thing of a small business owner who's got the, you know. The gift store or something, that's tough to compete with what's going on online, uh and same with. Public theater, or you know, or community theater is the same thing, I mean, it's.
I I go places like that, and I've always had the thought, how do these places?
Yeah, yeah, how does this business model make it?
Lot of donations and grants and.
It's a non, it's a gotta be.
It's a nonprofit, yeah, they're not.
It's gonna be a nonprofit.
Turn a big, yeah, um but it's something that the community, if invested in, um, you know, you find a way.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, uh, housing. Uh, yeah, we'll see this again. Uh encourage the development of a variety of housing types, and the idea that we're developing things in the harbor. Uh type sizes and densities compatible with neighborhoods within the harbor in regards to comedy, the diversity of residents. Policies, uh short suite, uh support development that provides a mix of attached and detached housing units. Ensure the standards for attached and detached accessory dwelling units. Like one of the only places where I actually see ADUs on a single-family lot. Uh that ensure that they enhance the character of the established neighborhood, promote fair and equal housing, uh access to housing for all persons. And activities that are discriminatory. Um, ADUs, we will, we will be talking a lot about ADUs, uh legislation that's ready for signature.
But this, keep in mind, this, this is.
This is downtown.
It's supposed to be just for the harbor. Again, it's an oddity, but that is.
Are there any ADUs in Gator?
Yes.
Yes, oh.
How many, how many have you?
Since I've been here, we just, we just permitted one, and we don't, we don't call them ADUs, we call them accessory apartments. So that, another oddity here that they use that term, because we don't have that term in our code. Um, but, yeah, we just permitted one, since I've been here, I can think of. I think three that have been permitted since, that's been since twenty fifteen.
But they are.
Well, it's, our code's a little prohibitive.
Right, um, which will be changing and won't necessarily specifically. Uh impacts, it's it's based on zoning, but if if legislation is signed, um then if you. Are zoned to allow single-family housing, you have to uh allow ADUs. And I didn't see any distinction in city size, unlike the um. Middle housing case, which, yeah, does exclude that.
Yeah.
So what? You, did you get a lot of pushback from the neighbors on those ones that you did?
Uh, one, one of them, one of them, there was some pushback.
Was there a common theme in that or?
Not really, no, uh, and I think in the end, we didn't get, I don't think it was a problem in in the end, I don't think there was a lot of. You know, there were, there was, one of them in particular, there was a little bit of dismay over it, I think, but they were kind of squeezing it in there too. But it's the one on Soundview, it's, it looks like if you drive down Soundview, there's a small house that looks just like the big house, almost identical. Right next to it.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I know one side, right, on the water side.
On the water, water side, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there was a little pushback on that, it was kind of, they were, you can see that they were sort of squeezing, it was kind of getting squeezed in there just a little bit too, and where they wanted to put it and things, it's kind of. Interesting, so that one, I remember there being a little bit of uh controversy around this, this one though, that we just, that Jeremy just did, I don't think there was anything. That was down on Sound, Soundview too, but up, up, upland.
Oh, yeah. So, it's coming, but to the extent that it impacts the harbor.
But I would offer a comment here, well, number three is redundant, uh that is federal law.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, well, most of this really, I mean, it's not. It's not really, yeah, it's not really saying much.
Isn't, isn't there another element that's all about housing?
Yeah.
There is.
When I, when I read this, I thought, why is, why is housing any different in this patch and earth than it is throughout the apartment?
No, compatibility piece, I think, uh, you know, specific to, I mean, really, it's more about the historic. District, but it's, it's a design.
It's like these policies are not, they're all, these policies are not, these, these policies belong in the housing element.
Right.
We're going to talk about housing in the harbor element, need to figure out what that is.
Right.
That's specific to the harbor, that should be talked about here, and I feel like. Most of that's been discussed in the other sections about design, historic character, lot sizes.
So is there any value in keeping this as a goal?
It doesn't really seem.
Maybe not.
I think there's a lot to be said about some of the figures that you brought up, ADUs and the bad housing, the density and record, but this isn't the place for it.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, I agree.
Yeah, I think that's, it's probably a pretty easy one to remove, unless we can find some nexus to. Specifically to the harbor that makes sense to talk about housing.
That isn't already covered.
That's already covered.
All the other design pieces, yeah.
What about residences above retail stores?
Mixed use.
Use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was discussed in another, that was discussed in another section.
Yeah, it is encouraged.
Yeah, but but it could be discussed here, if we're going to talk about, right? But that's something that maybe the city wants to see more of, and that, but that's a great question.
Right, because you might give it a stronger.
Well, and it's, yeah, and and if you talk to residents in Millville, they might disagree.
Yeah.
Right, with that, with that statement, uh, right. Because we're talking about that whole swath of area, so would we, do we want to see more corner uh, duplexes, triplexes, quads?
Right.
Mixed use, you know, do we want, where do we want that residential feel throughout the harbor? Right now, we have a requirement in the downtown business district where we only require, where you, where you can only do mixed use.
Only mixed use.
Single-family residence, residential is not allowed there, but Millville and all around it, it is allowed, and so I think that's a, I think it's a fantastic question to the community, and I, that maybe is what if, you know, maybe that's what this needs to get to in some, in some way, if, if it exists at all, I mean, because we might hear from the community, no. Heck no, we, we like it the way it is, we don't want that changed.
Right, so is, is the harbor as defined, you know, encompassing the, again, those neighborhoods, the individual neighborhoods that we never really sort of moved forward and distinguishing, is this too broad a brush? Um.
Yeah, that, that is, that is maybe a question, and or what, what kind of housing stock would you want to see in the, in the harbor in twen- in the year twenty forty-four?
Right.
Or do you see opportunities for infill?
Yeah.
The Peninsula Shopping Center within the blue line?
Yeah.
Yep.
This is a hugely controversial, I think I'm gonna raise, but I noticed, when I was reading through this, we have not nowhere in here does it talk about hotels, motels, or short-term rentals? Is that because we don't want to go there or?
I don't know, probably not, but I think the community, I.
I think it's a, I think it's a really.
That is a super hot button, but, an interesting one, and I think.
And maybe that's something is an outreach question.
I thought there was already a survey on that specific subject.
On?
On lodging and in, short-term rentals, oh, yeah, but, right, yes, we, we have short-term.
But the comp plan doesn't speak to it.
But the comp plan does not, yeah.
Did the survey provide enough information for us to be able to, to address those issues in the comp plan?
I would not say that there's a consensus on where or the other at the moment.
What kind of, uh, tie-in of the question about visiting?
Yeah, Karen played into that, and I thought about that, we started talking about it, but I decided not to bring it up, Dawn decided to bring it up, so.
Well, you know, it's.
It, it will get brought up, but if you do it in here, or whether it's out at our outreach events, people will talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Karen, didn't you mention to me that, uh, when they had the hearing on this, it was like fifty-fifty in terms of testimony?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's, you know, very divided.
Yeah, by the time we got to council, I mean, when we were at planning commission during the short-term rental discussions, what we heard was, we were heard from the pro SDR folks, and they were strong, and they, they did their job well, I would say, right? But by the time we got to city council, people, those, those folks came out, who were opposed to them, who didn't re- recognize or realize what was happening at the planning commission level, they got involved, and that, you know, that took things, just like it happened at the planning commission, it took everything a little bit, you know, sideways, so we landed on something.
There will, there will be another chapter in that story in the elections.
Yes, there will. Yeah, I think so, uh, but I think it is something that certainly we have to, and, and actually, what we told people we would do, what we told the community we would do, what we told council we would do, is that this would be discussed again when we get to the comp plan update, and then it would have to be something, and it is the right place for it to be discussed, because it is a community visionary, it is a policy decision ultimately.
Address these things, yeah.
Right now, we have some regulations in place, because we had to put something in place, but it is a policy question for the, for the community to determine what they want, and I think and I think it's a lodging question, you know, you can say short-term rentals, but I agree, you know, hotels, motels, all of those things.
Coming to Gator Harbor and.
Because we hear that, that we don't have enough beds for visitors, and that was one of the.
That's why the short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Exist, really, because there's no other place for folks to stay, really.
And that's what the pro people were kind of saying, although the hotels and motels that do exist.
Right, they're like, hey, wait.
You're taking our beds, which, that's what you're hearing in Colorado and Utah and those places, there's the resorts are crying foul, saying, well, we can't get people in, because everybody's staying in short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Uh, and.
Oh, you think, yeah, totally. Um, so we will, we will ask about lodging.
Hotels also need to be discussed.
Horizons, general. Um, and it'll be fun. Uh, economic vitality, uh, supporting, urge strong diversified, sustainable economy while respecting the natural and cultural environment and preserving, enhancing the quality of life in the community. Uh, identify and amend regulations that inhibit economic vitality within the harbor. Uh, work with downtown businesses, property owners, community groups to establish a stronger economic base in the harbor. Support additional parking opportunities through the development of a public parking structure. About this or shared parking program, without, of course, sacrificing or impacting the historical structures in the waterfront.
Hmm.
Encourage short preservation and cultural conversations that support economic development.
Forgot that that word was in there.
The parking opportunities, yeah, you chose them.
A parking structure, that's fairly specific.
A structure, this is one of the more. Yeah, yeah. Um, without the impact.
Parking structure.
I know, doesn't that like?
I, you, you immediately think ice storm.
It does not sound like something you want to see.
It depends on how much is above ground.
I know.
Right.
That's true, you can do underground.
See to the underground.
Yeah.
To change, but you can do it.
I think of the, I think of the structure in Seattle, down in, um, in, uh, uh, oh, shoot, that's the, that's my place, but. High Point Square, High Point Square, if you, there's one parking structure that kind of comes out of the hillside, that's what I'm trying.
Ship, the ship, right.
Yeah.
It's kind of, it kind of has some aesthetic.
There is, yeah.
You know, I think, Soundview Forest Park could have been.
I, I think that's a real good outreach question, because.
Absolutely is.
It, it goes to the real issue here of whether this is a tourist town, or whether it's a resident, an upscale residential.
Yeah.
As a resident, there, there's nothing I need to buy downtown, other than what's for sale in the chamber, even my boat. I don't need any parking or parking structure. And, uh, I, I think that, that ought to be one of our outreach.
Absolutely, comes up again and again in a lot of this. Um, and, yeah, I agree, I love driving through uh, downtown, but I don't stop nearly as much as I did my first move here, just to see what was going on.
See, I feel different about that, I do come downtown, especially the spice store.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I really miss the Hilton store.
Oh, did you still there?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I, I will, I mean, yeah, that's interesting, I like it for people. I'm, yeah, Christmas time, I'm all over it for sure, birthdays and stuff, um, but I, I was going into Harvard General to get sandwiches and stuff, so kind of, um, yeah, interesting, okay, uh, that's question, well, gosh, that's gonna be so interesting. Um, okay, uh, economic diversity. Um, that seems very similar to vitality, but yet different. Support local efforts to retain existing businesses and attract new businesses that provide diversity of products and services designed by the residents and visitors, uh, well, if they're not visitors, uh, identify and encourage sectors of, uh, economic economy within the harbor where opportunity might exist to create additional jobs and strategies for attracting employment. Um, encourage business development through promotion of small business programs. Uh, and reuse of structures, particularly for small startup businesses, which may be owned by or employed local residents, so that came up in our schedule. Uh, reasonable guidelines and standards for citing of home-based businesses in residential neighborhoods, uh, ensure they don't, uh, alter impact residential character. Um, encourage evening activities, talk a little bit about that, the commercial district, like theater, perhaps, and the establishment of small-scale entertainment venue for little, oh, there it is, theater, and musical performances, very prescient, yes. Um, okay, anything new here?
There, there is a office building in down, in the down waterfront area uh, across from, um, the guitar store, and is anything going on in there, is that big?
They have offices, they have offices, yeah, pretty sure they're occupied.
The mod, that modern building?
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's the, uh, the, the foundation.
Is it a nonprofit?
Oh, the Russell.
The Russell.
Russell.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on there now.
Yeah, it's, they, they have their offices in there.
Still have some offices there.
And they've got working in that building too, they have underground parking.
They do.
Big building.
I know, I know, it kind of, you don't see a lot of activity, like, day in, day out, so it does kind of have a mysterious quality to it.
Yeah.
Um, I, one thing that came up in my mind was shared workspace. Um, I don't know what we have now, or what, what the demand would be.
That's an interesting idea.
But, um.
Yeah.
And a potential outreach to, um, I, I know it goes down farther maritime services, services, a potential outreach, maybe, um, uh, the, what the demand would be for, um, any kind of shared work space for some of the maritime-based providers, others, mechanics, so, people and things, but, um, uh, you start thinking about who actually needs to be in Gator Harbor for their business, service-wise.
Yeah.
Um, and what we can do to help support them.
I like that, excellent. Yeah, and shared workspace.
And whether that's office or industrial.
Yeah, that, that was a big thing.
And I know shared kitchens or.
Shared kitchens, where you come out and do.
Or, or the food carts or.
Yeah.
And they wouldn't necessarily, wouldn't, it could be down here, but.
Is having more food trucks in the downtown area, I think there's one right now. Um, the, the trolley.
Yeah, the trolley.
But is, is that something that's feasible?
Yeah.
If you get an Indian permit.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a, yeah, not a permanent kind of, yeah, but we, we do permit them.
And they're supposed to leave, like, that trolley is technically supposed to, it's not supposed to be a permanent structure.
Like that trolley.
Exactly.
It does.
It does.
It could technically be towed out.
Yeah.
But it's kind of hard, it's hard piped into a grease interceptor.
I guess, with the downboard board or anything.
Yeah.
Basically, you can move, um, but yeah.
It's doable.
It's doable, we do, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily make it easy for folks, I will have to say, um, you know, we look at all, you know, traffic and and all the things that go with that, and so we, we put people through their paces a little bit, but, um, but we give permits for them.
In constant conflict with, um, broken motor.
The, the restaurants around there, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I guess so, I always thought, you know, it's like the, the Big Dog's Burger King model, where they all find the same intersection.
Yeah.
Like, oh, they're coming and you're hungry, so maybe you'll come to my place. Yeah, I always thought that was odd, but it. Yeah, or like a, yeah, auto center, where you have every single dealership.
There, there are some places, you know, like Capital Mall, where they just line up.
Yeah.
Get one another, get different food every day.
That's it?
Food truck rodeo kind of, kind of idea, which, it does get people out on the street, right?
It does.
Gets people walking around, talking, interacting.
Yeah, there's an energy to that, that's very different from, uh, the brick and mortar, we used to do farmer markets. A big vacant lot off sixteen, at the top of, um, front. Oh.
Oh, did these, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that big field out there, that, that's where they originally started the farmer market, the facility doing it, not just.
Downtown Portland, they have a whole block.
Yeah, they do.
They're dedicated, you can go there.
Uh-huh.
That's kind of fun.
I love that, because it's, yeah, eenie meenie, funny mom, it's super fun, all right.
What does the community think about food trucks?
I'm gonna, I'm, I know, people love the idea of it, they don't necessarily want it parked in front of their house, you know, but. Um.
Not my backyard.
Not my backyard, yeah, please. Uh, all right, revitalization, it's like some of these are kind of the same, but increase economic opportunities through the revitalization and reinvestment in properties, so a little bit of a difference, more sort of, uh, I guess proactive on our part, uh, would be the theory there. Uh, assist with planning and development efforts to reuse older buildings, redevelop, uh, redevelop vacant properties, revitalize older commercial and business districts within the harbor. Uh, encourage support revitalization through these incentives, reduce fees for permits, for utility connections, uh, waivers from land use performance standards, um, multi-family tax exemption, I'm not really clear how this helps revitalizing commercial stuff, but whatever, um, and reduce parking standards again, so that, uh, for instance, it um, help local private and public organizations structure special improvement districts, like parking or business improvement. Uh, local improvement districts, other programs necessary, so that's us putting time and money into, um, it's a partnership, right, with.
The downtown market.
It is the downtown, yeah, yeah, right. Um, okay, anything in there, jump out?
This is, my business is really a great section.
Yeah.
Something that, something that I think we need to look at, in my opinion, again, more carefully.
Yeah, it's got more concrete stuff to it.
I would see the outreach on this be going to the city, and what have we done, or what have we tried?
Great point.
In this respect, and what has worked, what hasn't worked?
Yeah.
What have we wanted to try that, that we haven't been able to, or?
Yes.
Or where, yeah, where, where are the opportunities there?
This goes back to our earlier question about what we want the community to look for.
Right.
Because there is, I mean, I, I think there's there is an appetite for some redevelopment, better uses in a lot of the areas in Gator Harbor, but there is a perception that it's quite unwise to do that, I mean.
Right, and is that, is that perception, is that real?
I think a lot, and I think a lot of it's real too.
Yeah.
Well, it kind of comes back to, you know, uh, the high, high restrictionary is a great example of one where, and the historic district as well. But is that still important to people, you know, is, is protecting that you shed as important today as it was yesterday, because that is, it, it slows things down quite, quite a bit, um, down there, you know, it limits what people can, what people can build.
And the design.
Yes.
Standards generally, right?
Design standards generally also do the same thing.
Yeah.
Uh, the historic district even more so, because you're putting even more limitations on, uh, on what people can, what people, how they can build, and what they can innovate.
Yeah, so you're spending a lot, uh, in, in addition to the time and carrying costs or whatever, uh, you're spending a lot on consultants to help you navigate. You know, your landscape architect, your architect architect, your engineers, and all these other folks, your stormwater, you know, all of it, which is not unique to us, but it, um, it's a lot, it's a lot more process, um, uh, and so.
We haven't gone to, there hasn't been an appetite for too many incentive, 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 incentives.
Incentivation.
Yeah, there hasn't been an appetite to, to implement a lot of incentives, you know, so these, these ideas are great, but we haven't.
Having them, yeah, what else can you think of?
The city has not gone there.
Right, so when something like this, you know, when we solicit from downtown waterfront, or the chamber, or whoever else, you know, give us some, give us some ideas, what, what do you think, um, uh, would uh, bring more folks in?
We got to be palatable ideas, obviously, because what has been put out.
Yeah.
If anybody's ever read this, uh,
Yeah.
has, has not been implemented, right, because.
Yeah, there's no, it says, no reduced fees or waivers from, um, I mean, and we'll, we'll revisit this stuff again, we talk about housing, right? Because that's another piece, which is why it's so odd to have multi-family tax exemption in there, but, yeah, why not? Um, but, yeah, tax incentives or, or, you know, all of this stuff, um, can also be used if, if we have the, the wherewithal and, and the will, um, to, uh, provide affordable housing, potentially.
So what, what incentives is the community willing to accept, right? What is that, like you were saying earlier, what is that trade-off? What is the trade-off that a community is willing to accept? What do, what do you want to see, and what are you willing to accept to get there?
Well, you, you've got a large and growing problem with this was shopping center area.
Correct.
What can the city do that would be positive, uh, resolve that and come up with a redevelopment plan that would be good for all concerned? Is it, is there a role to the city play there? Is it, is there a role to the city play there?
Absolutely.
I think there is, I think there is, I think it's, and maybe it's, you know, some of these types of things, it's looking at standards, looking at. Um, you know, tax, uh, tax breaks or, you know, whatever. Um, not that any of those things are are necessarily palatable or or literally feasible, but you have a conversation.
It's, it boils down to money.
Yeah.
With whether it be, um, public monies that are involved and private monies. And and the more policies, rules, regulations that we have in place. The more costly it is to develop and establish a new business and people go elsewhere. And and it can be the same for housing. I I can speak personally. Uh, it, I moved here seventeen years ago. I would not move to Gig Harbor today. I simply can't afford.
Yeah.
You know, I I live in a house that is now valued at eight hundred thousand dollars. I could not touch that. Couldn't do it, and it's just an average house. And when you talk about going into to establish a business here. And having to make those kinds of investments where you might have to turn, you know, ten thousand dollars. Profit, not just in sales, just to pay your rent. You know, you're, you're talking about a huge investment. Uh, in in what we're seeing and the reason why so many storefronts are vacant. Is because there aren't people there that are willing to make that investment.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
And I don't know how you encourage them to do so.
Well, we've got to, we got to find a way to balance the risk.
Yeah.
Risk from the business side and the risk from the community side of having something that maybe is undesirable versus having something that's um.
The, the reason we're coming up these quen, these questions is, is, is the fundamental. That is, does the average resident in Gig Harbor really care what happens downtown? Do they ever go there? Uh, you know, are they, are they living somewhere outside the city limits? Then they just, you know, they shop at Point Posnick and then they hop on the freeway and go to their job somewhere else across the bridge. Uh, such that, you know, well, that, that's just a quaint little area, I drive through there once in a while, that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Uh, but they don't want to make any meaningful investment.
And that's relative to today's discussion about the harbor proper, but we're going to deal with the same questions.
Throughout the city.
Throughout the city, yeah, community wide.
Yeah.
Where, what is our balance?
You see it in the same way.
And what rest do we take?
You know, then how long has that been open now? Four or five years? And then, and there's still a couple of vacant stores in there.
Oh, say the Point Posnick Square. But you're right, I mean, it's had a lot of turnover over that, over that time.
Um, so, you know, it, it, it is, it is a core question.
And not just for Gig Harbor. Unique challenges, yeah.
Uh, you know, and and I think it's going to be a growing one, uh, because of internet shopping. Brick and mortar stores are just simply going to have an increasing um, problem staying viable. And that creates a problem for the communities in which they operate.
Right.
Including here, we're seeing it happen in the downtown area.
Yeah.
It's totally a deep one.
It is. I, I think that people still crave experiences though. I, I do think that people will go. If you, if there's, you know, there's a string quartet playing over there, there's, you know, whatever. Something happening over here, I think that you can, you can still draw people out of, you know, you know, Amazon or whatever. For, for an experience that is, is interactive with other humans.
How viable is, look at what we have going down in Scancy Park every summer. And 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 that little park will be crowded.
Yeah.
But what we're talking about is we're, we're drawing in two hundred, three hundred people.
Yeah.
Then that's not a very, it's a big crowd for that little park.
Right.
But that, that is not a lot of people responding to that particular event often. Now, not when you talk about the size of the community area.
We are spread out.
And it benefits from the event, it's really an emergency center.
Right.
And, and, yeah, and in the meantime, there's two thousand people shopping at up there. Right? And and I don't know how you, you, you crack them.
The thing that keeps going through my mind, I keep thinking about this as we're discussing this, and I think you mentioned Port Orchard.
Yeah.
That's, that's the nightmare that Gig Harbor turned into something like.
Right, rundown, vacant, a lot of vacant, a lot of, yeah.
It's the, it's the classic nineteen eighties mall scenario.
Right.
That's the town I grew up in, and that's what it looks like now.
Yeah.
They've tried revitalization efforts, but they, they've all failed.
Yeah, we see successes and in, you know, there are, I mean, you mentioned Poldo, and maybe, you know, residents. Don't have a reason to, you know, go to the very yummy bakery that serves that skin, maybe in deliciousness, but um.
We do have a good bakery.
Oh my. Every time I get a visitor, uh, yeah, we got a Poldo. You know, we're Norwegian, we can have it, but um, but and and Michelle just shared, and I, I think it's, it's really true. The, the intangible benefits of even, you know, an event that maybe only draws, you know, a couple hundred folks. Is, is, it, it does enhance and strengthen community bonds, and, and I think that that does count. And so.
You, you have to convince me of that, because, you know, the people I see on weekends during the nice weather in Gig Harbor. There are people that don't live there, walking their dogs, pushing their baby crabs.
It's not a mixture of folks? I mean, I, I haven't been to a farmer's market, I've been to a couple of events. Dragging bug races and stuff, and I just, I mean, everybody came out for that. And there's the mayor and there's all the, you know, teams and local nonprofits and us. Um, and it was one of the first events that I attended as a new uh, resident of Washington State and. Uh, it felt very familiar to me, I mean, it felt like, you know, um, some of the events and things that happened in. In my part of California, but um, I, I, I think, I, I think there's value, how to measure that, whether that's enough. Um, you know, to, to sustain a downtown or something, you know, that's an open question, but I. I think, I think having more events, more, more regularly scheduled events throughout the year. You know, I wish that uh, you know, the farmer's market stayed open all year round, I know. And everybody has to go away during the winter, um, I know. Um, but something that keeps people coming out and, and seeing each other, I think is, I think it's important. But we'll ask, we'll ask them.
Fortunately, I think they're highlighting and changing culture. Uh, an, an example that always rings in my mind, so I, I used to live in this. And 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 I haven't been back in probably fifteen years. But my, my last visit, the common complaint was they could not get their kids to go outside and do anything.
Hmm.
Uh, and 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 there's a ski area that you could literally walk to. But the young people simply were not interested, they were more interested in being on the machines. And and I think that we're seeing that kind of trend in, in adults as well. Uh, they're more tuned in to events going on around their house and when they go out, they, they. They'll go to the big stores like those in Point Posnick, race in, get what they need, go back home. Um, when they go out to venues, they, they scatter all over the place. Uh, so there is less of, of a community focus. Uh, certainly, there's a lot of people who are community focused, but what, what I'm highlighting here. It, it is a changing culture, uh, from where we, we were kind of community focused to. An environment where we're not so much anymore.
I disagree. I think that there's opportunity and we get a good turnout, I mean, the Scarecrow Festival, they couldn't even park within a mile or two of it, I mean that. Uh, it's, it was. My wife's been involved with stuff in the harbor, the school, they get a ton of people out, especially when you get, you know, we've got quite a few. Younger families moving into Gig Harbor, and they're, they come out, if there's opportunity, they come out.
There's, if there's some, I, I, I think experiences is important, we will, we will find out, right? We're gonna, we're gonna ask people and they're likely going to give us honest answers about what they value and what would bring them out. And, and what would drive them to come downtown or uptown or wherever. Um, I know things are changing, but I, I think, I think especially after COVID, I, I really sort of feel more. Um, that, more going out and more reaching out for what we couldn't do for flipping two years. So, well, I, I don't disagree with you, I've got nieces and nephews attached to their, their phones, but they also go traveling. Like pretty much all the time and will, you know, so they're, they're craving experiences as well. We'll see what we can do. We'll, we'll, we'll ask and and find out.
Absolutely. These are important questions.
Yeah.
I hear you, they're out all the time, they're eighteen and twenty-four, they're.
You have unusual.
I think I want to ask whether residents would favor more housing redevelopment.
Hmm.
Than trying to redevelop some of the commercial businesses that have disappeared. And they use uh, peninsula as, as, as a example.
You want to say portable housing there or something? Some, I mean, just as an example, something like that. Okay.
We got less than ten minutes.
I know.
Go here, how many more slides do we have?
Two more slides.
Okay, let's see.
Maritime services. Uh, promote harbor bay related waterfront lands with improvement and features that support uses related to commercial and recreational boating. And water activities, uh, mixed use, buffer zone setbacks, these are some, some specifics. Uh, sharing docks, uh, other innovative concepts, uh, that conserve, um, allow increased retention of fishing and recreational water activities. Uh, temporary docking facilities, we talked about that for visiting vessels while retaining open source waters. Watercraft circulation, um, villain fuel dock, we also talked, um. Never, yeah, uh, and then service facilities, uh, which we talked about as well, open showers, uh, waste connections. For use of transient boaters, fresh fishing fleet down residence, um, protect navigation portals. Um, you touched on this, anything new, different, fun to add?
I think that's good stuff.
I think it's good stuff too. Okay.
I have one, sorry, I, I know it's late, um, what about, um, the public boat launch? Is there anything here about, and do we want to ask the community if they're interested in upgrading the public boat launch?
Launch upgrade?
It's in the county.
The one on the other side of.
Talk about the one on, on East Bay, Mr. Jordan?
East Bay?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
None, none of them are, no, not East Bay, what's the one on the other side of the harbor? Is that in the county too?
That's, yeah, yeah.
That's the only one that we have, but I know.
Yeah, there's one out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's, there's.
Yeah.
At low tide, at least when I had my boat, at low tide, you couldn't use it, there's no parking, I mean, is. Is there anything that you want to ask the community if they're interested in?
Do they want a boat launch?
Or improve that one?
Where do you put out, put in, whatever? Um, yeah.
Yeah, I know I've been out there several times, uh, and the, the parking. Uh, that you mentioned is, is a big issue out there, there's no place to park.
Oh, right.
It's very few, it's very.
Like less than five.
Really? Oh my gosh.
Well, it depends on how far you walk.
Oh. Wow, that's spoiled, we're in Manchester, we have nice parking and a nice. It's so easy, oh, love it, um. Okay, anything else for maritime services, we will go to our very last piece, which is commercial fishing fleet. From out preserved, our commercial fishing fleet, significant cultural and economic resource. Allow overwater, water dependent development directly supports that, um, and again, the, these are policies that are. Um, enshrined in our shoreline management program, uh, allow encourage commercial sales and services directly related to. Or supportive of commercial fishing, uh, such as marine fueling facilities again. And direct dock sales of seafood products, why don't people sell their stuff off the boat?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, I don't think they do at all.
I've never.
Talked a lot about that just recently, we've been talking about.
A lot of light commerce market.
Yeah, in conjunction with the.
I used to get emails from the crabbers and Santa Cruz to tell me when the crab came in and I'd go.
But typically, you know, a place like Gig Harbor would have sort of a. A market, a market, which we used to have, right, there, there was a market down where the tide is now, that used to be the market for Gig Harbor. And there was stuff just right off the, right off the boats, it was being sold right out of that place.
Right.
Those places are, those places get visited, the people go to those places and there, because they're, not only because you're getting fresh food, but also because it's just kind of.
Cool.
Cool.
It's cool, just be right there, they just come in and, oh.
It's like going to a good old butcher, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, um, just the fueling, I, I mean, is that on, ongoing debate in the community? Has the city council made any decisions about whether or not they want to do fueling, is it even permissible? Speaking of work. Yeah.
Very costly, so there used to be one here, um.
There's several, they used to.
Yeah, and then there was, there was plans for one, um. And then I, it fell, it was, I think it even, it might have gotten permitted or it got. Part, this was before I got here, partially through the permitting process, and then whoever was doing it, might have been. It might have been Rourke who was working on that, I can't remember. Um, but it didn't, it didn't get built, I think it, they might have been approved and then not built, probably because of the cost.
Yeah.
It can be done, so I guess the, the short answer is yes, it could be done, it is in the shoreline master program. Um, it, but it, it, it takes some permitting to get done.
For sure.
Especially environmental stuff.
Environmental.
Yeah, it's not an easy thing, it's not an easy thing to do in this day and age, right?
Yeah.
Whole float were in the actual, a couple years ago.
Did they?
The tanks are underneath the floats and.
Was it the city that did it, or was it private? Oh, they have a harbor district there.
Yeah, that. Yeah, that's a layer.
Does the city have any appetite to run a, a fueling dock?
There was some discussion about it a few years ago, actually, about a, a fuel dock float kind of thing out in the middle of the bay, yeah.
The city.
Yeah, but I, I think it's just, just talking. You know, I mean, there was no, there was nothing put on paper or.
We can put it out there. We can ask the question.
But it does show up a lot in the comp plan.
It sure does.
It is in the shoreline master program too, so I mean, it is something.
Came up and so, yeah.
But I don't know, you know, I don't know what the councils, I have no, I, I've not heard the council, this council talk about, I don't know what the council's desires for, I don't know what the administration's desires for.
If there's support and they're looking at the public outreach and seeing that there's a lot of support, then maybe, maybe it's time.
And if there isn't.
And if there isn't.
Interesting. Okay, we're at the magic hour.
I am magically done.
Thank you.
Oh, man.
Just precisely with the time.
That's why I didn't fix all my typos, because I knew I was gonna run over, so.
Is Commissioner Sopas still on?
No, he logged off, he said he was fading fast.
Okay.
So he logged off, our next meeting will be in the planning conference rooms, though, we won't be in here anymore.
Okay, ever.
And Josh said, we're, we're gonna discuss it. Study session will run to five thirty.
Or yeah, we are gonna serve it.
So we might, we won't have to make a decision now, but we might want to talk about whether we either.
Change the date.
Or change the date or change the location, if there's another night.
So we used, the planning commission used to meet in that room, and the reason that we started meeting here, yeah, the reason we started re-meeting here is because people started showing up. There wasn't enough room, so it was awkward. So we were sitting at the same table, basically, when the public started to show up, now, that doesn't happen often.
Well, might be though, if.
But it could.
Do you want?
And I expect that's going to move to the council chambers.
Council chamber isn't the way to go.
Uh, I think.
Michelle, you still have your hand up there. Commissioner Jordan, you still have your hand up there.
I I have, is it, uh, I have a question for the chair, but also for um city staff. Can I, are we at that point of the meeting?
Uh, yes.
All right, um, so, I'm here, I I'm I'm wondering if you would consider. I've read, reviewed our notes, and by the way, I realize it's late, everybody's tired, and this is probably a horrible time to ask a question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, for consideration. Every time um I've reviewed the the minutes and we vote on the minutes. Um, I'm wondering if the chair, and and maybe this is for uh Michelle too, cause I I'm guessing, Michelle, you keep the uh the minutes. But I feel like the minutes are just kind of a a a a repeat of the agenda. And I'm wondering if the chair would consider, when there are points where there's clearly a majority or around a recommendation. I wrote down a few throughout this meeting, if those can get actually memorialized in our minute. Um, and specifically things that we wanna make sure staff does, whether it's questions in the survey. Or or when they go out to the the public as part of the um outreach. Or things that we wanna make sure that the city council hears from us, like we have a unified, hey, we want to make sure that the city council. Is example, the planning commission really wants a fuel dock, I'm not saying that happened to me. Um, I I feel like there's an opportunity to enhance the minutes to things like that. And I wrote down a couple examples, I'm happy to go through those, but I'll pause right there for your consideration.
Okay, let me uh, let me see, if I can pause out maybe there's a suggestion based on what you said. Michelle, would it be possible if somebody, if if uh one or more of the uh commissioners said. Can you reflect that in the minutes?
I I'm sure I can do that, I have been instructed that this is how the minutes are to be, because it's recorded, that the only time that we. Take down anything else like that is if we're making an official recommendation, like when DRB makes a recommendation or makes the decision. Then it has to be verbatim, but because they're recorded, we don't keep lengthy minutes anymore.
Okay. Um, then maybe, maybe the way to do that is if somebody could make a motion to say we would like an official recommendation, would that?
I don't see why not, yeah, someone wants that actually noted, we can, we can do that, cause we did use to keep lengthy minutes. And go back the next day and make sure that all the words were verbatim in there, and it was directed that we're no longer doing that, just because everything is recorded. If somebody wants to go back and refer, they can go back and listen.
A couple questions. Oh, yeah, um, Michelle, does the city council review our minutes or re-watch our videos?
They do if they want, they don't look at our minutes, they don't, um, I mean, if if they wish to, they do, but it's not part of their agendas or anything.
Yeah, and then I'm thinking it doesn't have to be in all, like, I'm I'm not asking for like a verbatim, you know, legal transcript. I just feel like there's some things that there's clearly a majority on that um with, that I would do better. Or I I don't know if I'd do better, but I'd feel better if they were somehow memorialized, um.
I I think it's a really interesting idea.
Yeah.
I and I like the, and I don't know, we'd have to, of course, the city clerk sort of sets. How we do these things, how how these, how these uh, how our advisory boards operate, and of course, we've had some discussions about this. But um, I don't hate the idea of uh, you know. The conversation getting to a point where there's general consensus, yeah, we think you should ask this question of the community.
Yeah.
And the chair saying, let it be noted in the minutes.
That's how we used to, we used to do it that way.
Yeah.
And then that would just be, you know, it can be a simple line, I mean, it doesn't have to be a verbatim thing, but maybe it's just a note in the minutes that. Planning commission discussed this topic or came to this conclusion or something like that at this, at this timestamp. And then people can go and they can listen to the discussion, because it's recorded.
We used to link the timestamp to the actual minutes as well.
Oh, yeah, we did, yeah, that's when we're using AV capture, which sort of allowed us to do that. Sort of, it automated that for us, so it was much easier, but I think that's something we, that we could bring forward to. The city clerk, I I, cause I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea, and I like the idea that that does, because I think the point is well taken. The council is not gonna go and listen to this meeting, you know, unless there's something specific that they were told, hey, you need to go and listen to this meeting, because something like this was said, you know. Uh, but if they had something in writing where there were. Uh, uh, you know, these ideas.
Yeah.
This would kind of get to some of, I think this might get to some halfway point of where some of the things that Commissioner Brown was bringing up for a while. About what this commission could do, how we, our message, how the planning commission's message is communicated to council. Bridging that gap a little bit, I think it's not a bad idea.
Not at all, um, I do have five pages of notes, um, I'd be happy to put that into. Um, you know, categories and and, you know, it might be bullet point-ish, um, but I I'm more than happy to memorialize it. For myself as much as uh for your commission, um, because I am gonna incorporate these questions into actual questions. Um, uh, in our public outreach efforts, so um, I I very much take seriously all of that. The ideas and and well thought out questions.
Can we, uh, can you guys explore that with the city clerk and put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
That.
So that we can just maybe spend a few minutes on this, cause of the length of the hour.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know that we wanna go into detail on that, but I would like to discuss this further, cause, you know, we've had other members raise issues, related issues. To this. Also, uh, Robin, would you email Commissioner Solus and ask him if he has any input to me?
I'm just gonna follow up with him and.
Yeah.
And make sure that he uh is a part of the discussion, even if it's offline, absolutely.
And then share that with us as well.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, great suggestion. All right, uh, next meeting, uh, Thursday, May fourth, twenty twenty-three. And then, uh, anything else? To bring up? Announce, entertain a voting for a juror. Okay, yeah, I'll consider one of those a second, all right, all as a favor, say aye.
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 Okay, you as a juror, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.